Aaron Johnson.
Here.
Grace Barbara Jordan.
Here.
Trish Bodie.
Here.
Dawn Heissel.
Here.
Jim McKay.
Here.
Will Stright.
Here.
Pamela Wagner.
Here.
With seven members present, I declare a quorum and call the meeting to order. At this time, we will go into closed session for purposes permitted by Texas government code, including Texas Government Code 551.071: Consultation with Attorney Regarding Pending or Contemplated Litigation and/or Attorney-client Privileged Matter; 551.074: Deliberation Regarding Resignations, Terminations, Employment, Reassignments, Duties, and Evaluation of Personnel and Public Officers; 551.074: Deliberation Regarding Contract Employee Resignations and Possible Report to ESPEC for Abandonment of Contract; 551.074: Personnel: Deliberation and Consideration of Principal Position for Elementary-27; 551.074 and 551.076: Bus Transportation, Safety, Security Measures and Personnel; 551.0821: Deliberation Regarding Matters Whereby Personally Identifiable Information Regarding One or More Students Will Be Disclosed; 551.082 and 551.074: Hear and Deliberate on Parent Complaint Concerning School Children and School District Employees. The Board will take no action in closed session. We will return to open following our closed session.[112.00]
If I could have your attention please. If I can have your attention up here please, I'd appreciate that. I want to thank everybody for being here tonight and for all the hard work that made tonight possible. And appreciate your patience as we...
Is 7:08 and we are back in open session. Welcome to all of you who have joined us since we went to closed session. It's great to have you with us. We'll start with our invocation and pledge.
If you would all rise please.
Father God, we've come to you tonight because we want to, we want you to be here. God, we thank you for how you have blessed us in so many ways. And Lord, we ask that you continue to do so. That you protect our families, our children, or the futures that they represent, but also the lives that they are now. God, we thank you for how much you do love us, for the future that you have in store for us. And that's why we want you present with us here tonight. God, I pray for all the families that are represented in this room. Thank you for the blessings that they are to this community and their schools that they represent, God. I pray that you continue to bless them as they seek to better themselves, but also this community itself. God, again, we just want to praise you for how, what you are doing and for what you're going to do. In your most holy name that I pray. Amen.
Thank you so much. Please remain standing. Cadet Seaman Apprentice Wesley Stetson of the Lone Star Company Navy Junior ROTC at Vista Ridge High School will lead the Pledge of Allegiance. Cadet Stetson is a first-year cadet and senior at Rouse High School. He is a Boy Scout and currently completing his Eagle Scout project at the Texas Humane Heroes Animal Shelter. Cadet Stetson recently earned honors as Cadet of the Month for September. The Cadet of the Month award recognizes one-year, first-year junior ROTC cadets who have demonstrated loyalty, reliability, patriotism, and exceptional performance of duty. Cadet Stetson's exemplary performance of duty in the classroom, on teams, and serving the community reflected most favorably on the Lone Star Company, Rouse, and Vista Ridge High Schools and L.I.S.T.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Union of Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, Cadet. You may be seated.
All right. We have a few communications items. We'll do those first and then we'll return to citizen comments. So, and I think our first announcement or our first communication will do last. So, why don't we go to item B? Is that right? Our National Merit Semi-finalists?
We will. We will recognize our National Merit Semi-finalists. I also want to thank Pastor Jason Collins of New Hope Baptist Church for being here this evening. And I want to thank every member of the audience for also attending. You can tell their turnout is large tonight. We are so blessed to be in a community with such outstanding young academic students and their parents who support them in everything that they do. The National Merit Scholarship Program honors individual students who show exceptional academic ability and potential for success in rigorous college studies. These academically gifted high school seniors have the opportunity to compete for scholarships worth approximately $31 million that will be offered next spring. Leander I.S.T. is proud to recognize 22 students that have been named National Merit Semi-finalists. And to assist with that, I'd like to welcome our Communications Coordinator, Matt Mitchell. Matt?
Thank you, Dr. Troxell. Good evening, Mr. President, trustees, esteemed guests. The National Merit Semi-finalists, I will call by school, and it is indeed my pleasure, to introduce the National Merit Semi-finalists from Cedar Park High School, Mackenzie Martinez, Joshua Colenbrander, Joshua O., Pugita Shukla. If you'll join us, please, here at the backdrop. Very good. Thank you and congratulations. All right. From the National Merit Semi-finalists from Vandegrift, Paul Kluki, Bo Dang, Varun Gorti, Connor Gray, Grace Hedges, Raymond Hong, Navya Jenga, Mathias Latore, Daniel Lee, Carolyn Lee, Brandon Schinaman, Andrew Tang, Michael Choi, and Lucy Shu. Thank you and congratulations. And now the National Merit Semi-finalists from Vista Ridge High School, Garrett Copeland, Megan Caramassetti, Mia Lee, Anquita Rao, and Michael Ross. If you'll join us up here, please.
To the students and to the parents, congratulations on that outstanding award. You know, I used to say that National Merits Scholars were born and not made, but that would be a disservice to the students that are here who worked extremely hard in their classes throughout their entire educational pursuit to be here this evening and to get this opportunity to excel academically. I can tell you as a former high school principal that you're going to have a lot of opportunities for scholarships. Take those scholarships. They will help your parents and your siblings as they move through the system. And congratulations to you. Board members and members of the audience, we're not going to recognize our College Board National Hispanic Scholars. The College Board National Hispanic Recognition Program honors approximately 5,000 of the highest-scoring Hispanic and Latino 11th grade students who took the PSAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test. Students who receive this recognition scored in the top 2.5% among Hispanic and Latino test takers. Our district is fortunate to have 32 National Hispanic Scholars and to assist with their recognition. Again, I turn it over to Matt Mitchell. Matt?
Thank you again, Dr. Troxell. Okay. Once again, we'll call by school. From Cedar Park, Mackenzie Martinez, Finnegan Hayne, Kendall Morris, Catherine Carazo, William Lipscomb, and Austin Grendel. Join us at the front, please. All right. Now from Leander High School, Kayla Azavado, Eralp Orkun, Alexander Reeve, Jose Reyes Adan, and Leonardo Zamora. If you'll join us at the front, please.
You're welcome. Thank you. Congratulations.
And now the Hispanic Scholars from Rouse High School, Talia Cardenas, Alejandro Neff, and Andres Vera. And now the Hispanic Scholars from Vandegrift, Mathias Latore, Camden Perez, Grant Schaefer, Camille Gutierrez, Elena Wilson, Cameron Segura, Marley Price, Oriana Santucci, Stefano Bonilla, Brianna Navas, and Maximilian Dietrich. Join us at the front, please. And now the Hispanic Scholars at Vista Ridge, Mark Munoz, Logan Willis Elizondo, Angel Bergeron, Spencer Young, Cameron Mahinell, Julia Abreu, Katherine Gray, and Natalie Mercado. Please join us at the front.
Board members and members of the audience, that does conclude the recognitions for this evening. I know the student body that's here that wants to go home and get their homework done. So, we're allowing you at this time, if you'd like to leave, you're more than welcome to stay. But do know, we appreciate you being here this evening to celebrate a very important event, and that's National Merit Scholarships. Thank you so much.
How are you?
Good.
Sounds good.
I have stuff to do. Can't even talk about it.
Are we getting drunk?
No.
Give a couple minutes where we'll take pictures.
Yeah.
Very cool.
Yeah.
I like that.
Yeah.
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 Thank you again and congratulations to our students.
Have a good night.
We have one other communication item. Under State Board of Education rule, completing required continuing education each year of service is a basic obligation and expectation of any sitting board member. As board president, I am required to announce the name of each member who, as of that member's anniversary of election or appointment to the board, has completed the required continuing education, has exceeded the required continuing education, and is deficient in meeting the required continuing education. There are four tiers or categories of board member continuing education. Tier one, local district orientation, basic legal orientation and legal update training. Tier two, team building training with all board members and the superintendent. Tier three, annual continuing education, and tier four, evaluating student academic performance. This year, there are no tier one training requirements of any type to be announced for any sitting members of our board. All board members, along with the superintendent, have completed the tier two required team building training. All board members have also exceeded their tier three annual continuing education requirements. And all board members have completed the required tier four training on evaluating student academic performance. That is my communication.
Yes, sir.
All right, we will now open citizen comments. First, actually, we have just one speaker this evening. Kathleen Shoney, welcome. You'll have three minutes for your comments. A timer here.
Thank you first off very much. My name is Yezidus Kathleen Shoney. I'm president of the Leander ISD Council of PTAs, and tonight I've come to talk about PTA membership. On Monday, October 5th, at a candidate, school candidate forum hosted by the Leander ISD Council of PTAs, I asked all candidates to join not only their local PTAs, but all PTAs within Leander ISD. Within two days of that challenge, the standard was met by Gloria Gonzalez DeLuca, who became a member of all our PTAs within Leander ISD. So tonight, I ask you to do the same. Leander ISD Council of PTAs is the largest volunteer organization within Leander ISD, and we account for the majority of your 14,000 volunteers within the district. Last year, our PTA membership peaked at just over 10,000 members within our district. Laura Wise was kind enough to point out it would be enough to fill Bible Stadium. We are advocates. We look forward to Texas PTA Rally Day on February 25th, 2019. This will be the first year Leander ISD students will come. In the meantime, we have meetings, events, delicate meetings, and collaboration with the superintendent to attend. So this year, I challenge you to become members of all the PTAs within Leander ISD. You can do this by joining at www.joypt.com, or you can contact the council directly. The Leander ISD Council of PTAs backs the future, and we know you do too. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shoney. All right, I'm not aware of any other speakers for citizen comments this evening, so I will close citizen comments, and we will proceed to our operational, actually, I'll accept a motion on consent before we move to operational discussion.
Mr. President, I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Motion by Will, second by Jim, all in favor. Any opposed? Seven in favor, none opposed. Consent agenda is passed. At the request of Dr. Troxel, we're going to adjust our agenda slightly. We will first go to Item C on the agenda, the Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas presentation by Mr. Yanda.
Mr. Johnson, so annually, as y'all are aware, our state assesses the financial health and performance of every school district. It's called the PERS report. It's been around for almost two decades at this point, and this evening is our opportunity to have a public hearing and present the information for the 16, 17 data that was analyzed by the TEA. And so, in going through that, you'll see, you know, there are some different disclosures must be presented, but then also some of the indicators and their performance for the district has been disclosed. And so, background, you'll see that it has changed pretty substantially over the last several years. Last couple of years, it's been focused around 15 criteria, and the rating system has been aligned to our academic side where it's on a letter grade basis. And so, we're pleased to announce this evening that we had a perfect score of 100, which is an A by their standards. And so, we're going to go through what that looks like and how we ultimately scored. Here, you'll see what some of that transitions look like, and this will continue to transition over the next couple of years. That'll be something we'll cover in the very near future with the board on what that looks like and what that may mean for public education. And so, there's three different areas that the state assesses. They look at some of the critical financial health of a district, they also look at, you know, financial solvency, but then also look at competence, and we're going to talk through what that means as far as some of those indicators. And so, you'll see the first five are the critical indicators, and they focus around timeliness of turning in our financials to the state and making sure that our audits are clean and that our payments are made in all different respects to each of the state agencies. But the next couple of slides you'll see are the solvency indicators, and a lot more of the focus ends up being about the financial performance of the district. The one I bring your attention to is probably number nine. There, they're looking at, did we run a surplus? Did we run a deficit? If we ran a deficit, do we have at least 60 days of cash on hand? And so, looking at just where we are financially. And so, in the next set, you'll see information about debt in regards to ratios there, as well as administrative cost ratios. Again, in all areas, we scored perfect points. So the last of the areas is financial competence, and again, here, they're now looking at, was the audit a clean audit? Was it free of material misstatements, free of any findings? And so, that resulted also in positive points for the district. And so, part of the disclosure requirement is to go through and identify the board and the superintendent in different respects, disclose those, and then you'll see the other disclosures regards to travel, regards to all lodging, mileage, reimbursement, so forth, for the team of eight. And so, again, we had a perfect score. You'll see the history for each of the last several years. We've never not had a perfect score, in all honesty. We've always had a superior rating and always had, in the recent years, a letter grade of A. And so, very proud of where we are financially, and so, definitely open it up at this point for any questions. The wise, I think that is the last slide, and otherwise, we'll need to have a public hearing.
So at this time, we will open the public hearing on the first presentation by Mr. Yanda. Is there any member of the public who wishes to be heard for this public hearing? All right, then we will close the public hearing on this issue. Any additional discussion by the board? Any questions for Mr. Yanda?
If I could just make a comment, and I have to say it publicly, both to Mr. Yanda and his entire team, to consistently get not just an A rating, but a perfect score is a phenomenal accomplishment by a group of people that are really dedicated to ensuring not only sound fiscal management, but transparency in finances. So look, please let the entire department know that this team of eight is so appreciative of all the work that you and your team have done, not just this year, but prior years as well.
I appreciate that, and obviously, start to tone at the top. We've got a team of eight that, for years, well before I arrived at the district, is saying that have always had a perfect score, so it is something that is a testament to our district and our team of eight, and obviously, our staff, just the same.
Yeah, it's a great legacy that we, as board members, really value as well. Appreciate the work of you and your team.
Thank you, staff.
All right, we will close this item on the agenda then, and we're going to go out of sequence one more time, out of courtesy to our guests from Pasa. We'll move next to the annual demographic report.
Good evening, board members. Dr. Pat Guzman and Dr. Stacy Tavera, who are population survey analysts, are here tonight to give our annual update on demographic update. I will say, this year, we were projected to be at 39,937, and sad to say, they missed it by 19, so we're at 39,956 as of today, so that is pretty remarkable. With that, I'll turn it over to Pat and Stacy.
We certainly appreciate being here this evening and plan to give a short review of the demographic update. Please feel free to interject with comments that you have, or questions, or need for future research in specific areas. I thought you'd be interested in looking at the entirety of the Austin metro area. This is last year's data. We've learned not to use pre-official P E E M data for this year, or any other year for that matter. So you see, the district ranks third in enrollment, and then in terms of the growth in the district for that year, then the district was first, and I'm almost certain it was first this year because you had right at 1,000 students added, or maybe by the next few days, it will be 1,000. So it's interesting also to look at the five-year period and see, again, the number of students added, and know that those are a large number of newcomers that live in every neighborhood and have influenced the district demographically in terms of the composition of the newcomers. Now, statewide, then, this growth is also interesting. Numerically, again, the district ranks ninth out of the entirety of all districts in the state, and that is particularly interesting in lieu of some of these districts being larger geographically, therefore having more opportunity to grow than Leander, which is also a very large district geographically.
What page number was that one on?
I'm finding it. I'll tell you in a minute. She'll yell it out here in just a moment.
Page 12.
So in looking at the percent growth, it is interesting to look over the last 10 years at the percent growth, and in the younger years of the district, the district leaps forward like a gazelle in terms of percent growth, but now that it's a large district in enrollment, it can't leap. It has to lumber like an elephant, and yet still increased at about 1,000 by the time we reach the P E E M snapshot. Now, we're always interested in the demographic characteristics, and this is from a small annual sample, and the data was just out in September, was it not, for the American Community Survey sample for LISD? And of course, the interesting thing is the upper socioeconomic characteristics of the district. The median household income is quite high, the percent with a bachelor's degree also high. It's a very interesting district, and I believe that the district has had, it's gone through much longer travel times to work than this 29 minutes, but it may have leaped up a minute or two in the last year or so as well, so it's maybe peaking back up just a little bit.
Yeah, I was going to ask if you have any data on what roads they're taking.
Every minute counts when you're on the way to work or coming home, so I'm sure they're studying their routes carefully. So if we fenced in the district and looked at births aged five years, we would see that the district would continue to grow in regard to kindergarten enrollment, but is leveling off about 2021, again, excluding the net in-migration of newcomers that have kindergarteners. And now, keeping in mind that demographic profile that we just showed you, it's interesting to look at the percent disadvantaged, which is very, very low for a large district. As a district gets larger, it diversifies, and this district yet has had a very low percent of economically disadvantaged for its size. Likewise, if you look at the other districts in the metropolitan area, you see that the three districts that have also very low percents of economically disadvantaged are smaller districts, therefore they can be homogeneous. The largest of those has about 11,000 students, like Travis, 11,500 or so. So then you compare that to the 40,000 in Leander. Now likewise, we look at this data because it's basically, when you look at the percent disadvantaged or star passage rates, you're looking at what builders and developers are studying. And so, here you see the star passage rates are high, again, for a large district, very uniquely high, behind Frisco, which has about 10 or 11% free and reduced lunch, and then KD ISD, which also has a low percent, and those two are correlated, the disadvantaged and the passage rates. Here, again, we're trying to compare that data to the neighbors because we're looking at this the way a builder or developer or investor in undeveloped land would be using this data. And again, you see those three smaller districts geographically that are more homogeneous. Now, if you look at the smaller numbers, you know, we Aggies put the most important numbers in the smallest print, but if look at the percent enrolled in the district in 2016 and then in the fall of 2018, and you'll see that there's a higher percent enrolled in the district relative to the total student population which could be enrolled. So if we looked at the total population of the student cohort, then we have 94% approximately enrolled. Then private schools have gone down a portion of a percent from 2.8 in two years into 2.4. Charter schools, which have worried so many administrators, have also declined in that two-year period based on our databases for this fall. And then if we look again at the...
Can I, what page is that going to be on?
And I'm going to keep moving so that I won't waste your valuable time. The charters right now away from this district are almost 1,300. So that percent, though, you'll see, is very low relative to other districts in the metro area, with Austin having over 15% in charters.
Is that less of a percentage this year than last year that you presented?
This is last year's data, fall of 2017. Since it's comparative, we have to use official data to make sure it's accurate.
So the summary of that chart is on page 197, and then the data that supports it is on 225 and through 227. Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome. And, you know, the most important variable is the one that you might think is the simplest. The most important characteristic in estimating the number of individuals relocating into Leander ISD is the unemployment rate. And so, of course, we know it's always low. Historically, it has been the lowest in the nation very often for the Austin area, but it is even lower, and that is that second number for each of the geographic areas that are listed. So we know that individuals feel that their jobs are stable, that they are able to move with a certain comfort level. Otherwise, relocation stops, mobility slows greatly. And it has been fascinating to see where there are new employment centers evolving, and especially in the city of Cedar Park, where we'd heard about these developments for years, but now they're becoming a reality and will have a big impact on the continued growth of the district. Housing trends, you can see the municipalities, and of course, there are nine different cities that comprise this district, and each has an impact in its own way. Valente still has about 160 lots that aren't developed, for example. So you would, and those are becoming in big demand for full-time homeowners instead of the second homeowners. of the second homeowners. So every municipality has its specific impact. And then, too, it's important to look at that list of the number of parcels, five acres or more, that have been sold, and see that every year fewer are sold. Why? Because the district is fast building out.
I have a question as we're talking about building out because projected families, single homes, I'm just curious, last time in our report, you kind of broke out what the median average was for Cedar Park, for Leander, for different kinds of areas.
Oh, uh-huh.
And this time, you just said Leander I S D is the median price. Is it because you're seeing, on page thirty-eight, you just had the value, median value of a home in Leander I S D has not broken out? Is there a reason you're doing that? Is it because we're getting closer to meeting...
We have looked, we have looked at the cities individually for our purposes, and of course, Cedar Park is quite high overall, the median value is right now relative to other suburban municipalities, but it wasn't a strong enough factor to place a great deal of emphasis on it. It would have been if the medians were declining in older subdivisions. That is of great interest to us, something of that nature, but overall, not as critical. But it is, of course, helpful in its own way. So you can see the parcels that have just sold, and then also know that the second most important factor next to unemployment rates is looking at where there is going to be a new arterial that can open up an area for undeveloped parcels. And of course, six-twenty's widening will help, but not immensely because it's primarily developed, I just didn't want you to forget, in the deep south. And the Four Points extension will have an impact on residential development. And then, of course, in the north, we've been waiting so long for some of these, like the San Gabriel completion more to the east and other arterials, some in Treviso that will help greatly. But also, we're hearing rumors, even though it's not a part of the C I P, the Capital Improvement Plan of any sort, that Nameless Road will be widened. And then that would open up whole new possibilities in areas that we have thought were greatly inhibited in regard to adding housing. Now, one thing, too, that we've been following with interest is that, and I don't want to emphasize this too much or spend more than one minute on it, but the growth of those sixty-five and over has been seventy-nine percent in the last five years. And that is the highest for any of the districts in this metro area, at least that we have looked at. We've looked at about fifteen or sixteen, the fifteen or sixteen largest. And so I wanted to point that out to you because it does have an impact in that in the last two years, the ratio of students per house, per single-family house, has declined a little bit. In other words, those baby boomers are taking up the housing. And so it makes it really interesting to think about the impact in both the older existing homes and in the new homes. Why? Because they have the disposable incomes to buy the larger homes, and the poor millennials are suffering and maybe even only make a third of the income that you have to have to buy an entry-level home.
So with the decline in students per house, are you saying the decline then eventually will, do you think our growth will continue to...
I don't think it's going to have a huge impact, but if you assume that the ratio stayed as it was two years ago, then it's either twenty-four hundred or twenty-eight hundred students lost. And it's just interesting to think about this continuing as a trend, and so probably there will be that equivalent number perhaps lost again, but at the same time, these older subdivisions are regenerating with younger households moving in, so they're having a countervailing effect. But it is interesting that this is the district with the highest percent. I think, you know, we see evidence of that all over the district, but it's fascinating to see the statistic. You mentioned the housing, the youngers are buying some of the older houses. Remember last year, the year before, we were not worried, but you were watching around Cedar Park High School, those houses, because the children were moving back into the homes with the parents because they couldn't afford the economy and stuff. So are they buying the homes now, or are the children coming back into those homes? I guess I should say we're hoping they're buying the homes. But, you know, the millennials aren't really increasing more than one percent in the district. You know, they're still, they can't buy homes easily because of the price points. So it will happen, but it's just happening slowly because they don't have the same advantages that that same age group did, you know, several generations removed. But you did see some this time, because you hadn't been seeing any. Well, we do know, we have counted the number of the built-out subdivisions that are regenerating. I can't give you that specific number.
We have a slide coming up that will address the regeneration in built-out subdivisions.
And here, this is of interest because it tells you where the highest growth is in single-family developments, and it's in alpha order, not in the numeric order of the importance of the growth, but you get the general idea. And Treviso has been leaping forward in residential development, and also, I believe, had the most number of homes sold in the metro area that were seven hundred thousand and over. At least the developer tells us that. Now, here, we're just going to zip through the multifamily units because there are so many of so many different kinds. These are completed but still being occupied. Then here are those that are in various stages of construction. Some of them are, you know, they have a bond, so they can, you know, phase one can be occupied while they're working on another phase and that sort of thing. It's complex, but again, it gives you some idea of enormity. And then this is yet another group, not any of these give you the complete list because there's yet more multifamily, but these are the ones with the largest number of units. It may not be the maximum number, but it's the number in blue that we have projected. So at the first one, Village Green, you know, Indigo Ridge has been planned for years, now is underway, and it could have up to three thousand units. We've projected thirteen hundred and sixty and so forth. So, you know, there are several that have a large number of units. And then condos here are still playing a big role, and these can be anywhere from what we stereotype as condos to single-family detached homes. It's just that only one lot is involved. So the developer owns the lot. Here, total of projected housing units over the next ten years, around forty-four thousand four hundred. And then if you wanted to see the easy crib sheet, in this case, a map, you'll see the developments. Some are apartments, like North Line is predominantly apartments. In the T O D, it was last year called the District, and part of it was called the Village. And then Lackey, we anticipate will begin development within the next ten years, quite costly land at this point and so forth. Then here, you're looking at the last five years of the projection period where you see the red and gold anticipate strong development in those locations. And then finally, in terms of a build-out timeframe, twenty-twenty-eight through a build-out period, you see the west side as important, but it may be very, very low-density lots, or it could be high-density urban living units as well. So development density, just keep in mind that the district is right now sixty-five percent built out. And if we included the Balconies Canyonlands Wildlife Reserve Acquisition Zone, which is an aspiration for individuals to provide land for the B C W R, then it would be seventy-three percent built out. But we don't think that's appropriate really to include because we can't force those landowners to acquiesce to that plan.
I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
So last time when you all gave us the report and it had the development density on there, it said seventy-three percent built out, so I mean, it's matching.
Yes, ma'am.
It also said how many students per square mile? I thought that was interesting. Was that number on that one?
I don't think it is. We have it in so many different ways. We have it by city and so forth, but we'll look and see if we have the overall density of the built-out portion, and we can give you that. If we don't have it, we will calculate it and let you know. But now, this is what Stacy was mentioning earlier. If you just look at the last two columns, it's very educational here because the vast majority of the district's students live in built-out subdivisions. Is it about seventy-two percent perhaps, or seventy-five percent maybe, live in built-out subdivisions? So you'll see that the elementary, starting in twenty-eleven, the net loss in built-out subdivisions was a hundred and nineteen, and this year it's three ninety-seven. Then in the secondary grades, you know, those were, the students were still aging, you know, moving through like a snake that swallowed the kindergartners first and then gradually moved through to the twelfth grade. And you see that in twenty-eleven, they were still adding students in those built-out subdivisions, but now for the first year, there was a slight decline in grades six through twelve, just food for thought. So students per housing unit, single-family, it's point six-two. The average for the state would be about a point six-three. Now, that is because of the baby boomers. You are beloved by older persons. And multifamily is point two-nine, and it has been several numbers, but it's been point two-seven, you know, quite a bit of the time. And a lot of it has to do with the price points of the new multifamily and so forth. So here, then, this is of interest just because Treviso has a low ratio, and, you know, it was a little higher the last two years. And then this year, they added at least a hundred and forty-three or so homes. But again, the baby boomers are buying in Treviso. But then compare that to Steiner Ranch. However, see that Steiner Ranch's ratio in twenty-fifteen was one point oh-nine, and now it has sunk a bit to one point oh-three this year. So it's, this is all helpful to us and interesting to watch the trends. So student projections, we anticipate that you will add over a thousand students this coming year, and that's after conservatively looking at what might be the decline in the built-out subdivisions. So we looked at what the numbers look like projected for every added subdivision and multifamily unit, but then also looked at the potential for decline in those built-out areas. And then we estimate for twenty-twenty-eight, almost fifty-two thousand students in the district. And that trend line would be in twenty-twenty-eight, about fifty-four thousand at a high-growth scenario and almost forty-nine at a low-growth scenario. And then in looking post-two thousand twenty-eight, there would be a potential, conservatively, assuming very low levels of utilization in the northwest of the challenging terrain and lack of easy access, nineteen thousand two hundred and fifty-three added units, which is translating into about seventy-one hundred more students. And that's very conservative.
With those expectations, is that complete build-out or eighty percent or not? Like, how far built-out then would you be?
That would be complete build-out with a huge number of assumptions.
Beyond two thousand twenty-eight.
It's post-two thousand twenty-eight.
We've projected about forty-four thousand new homes between now and two thousand twenty-eight. And then in addition to that, another nineteen thousand or so, very conservatively beyond two thousand twenty-eight.
Okay.
And so in the first ten years, we add almost twelve thousand students in this first ten years that we are contracted to create that particular projection. After that, very approximately, maybe another seventy-one hundred students, but there's so many unknowns in that regard. And now Stacy is going to give you an update in regard to facility planning.
This is another hotspot map that looks similar to the one you saw for new housing with the red and orange concentrated in the north. This, however, represents new students, whereas the previous map represented new houses or apartment units. And so clearly, the concentration is in the far north with the big master plan communities that you recognize, Treviso, Graywood, Deerbrook. The Lackey parcel has not, is not underway yet, but it has that potential within this decade, Larkspur, Bryson, and Palmiero Ridge. When we aggregate this into just the elementary students and aggregate them into the attendance zones and compare to, so the number of students we're projecting to gain in each of these attendance zones over the next decade. In the far north, of course, there are four elementary schools in the far north that are projected to grow by more than seven hundred students in the next ten years. They include Parkside, Pleasant Hill, Baghdad, and the new Elementary Twenty-Seven that will open soon. In addition, Mason with Treviso Incorporated is projected to grow over eight hundred students. I mean, yes, over eight hundred students over the next ten years. So Mason is the winner this year as far as projected growth. So up in the north, that gives you a preview of where, of course, where the new schools are going to be needed, but if you think about seven hundred new students in one, two, three, four schools, that's going to be a number of new elementaries up in the far north. So let's get started. Well, so the, I'll go back. This represents the attendance zones that have been approved with the opening of Elementary Twenty-Seven. So that's really the first step in the long-range plan, is the opening of Twenty-Seven in twenty-nineteen, the fall of twenty-nineteen. The next step is the opening of number twenty-eight in the northeast of the district. Now, this is the area that has Palmiero Ridge and Escalera Ranch and Reagan's Overlook. This is around the intersection of Ronald Reagan and F M twenty-two forty-three. And so a new elementary in that general area can be utilized by about fall of twenty-twenty. Now, when the district purchases a site somewhere in that yellow area and the, is announced and becomes well-known that a new elementary will be up there, it's very likely that the student population is going to accelerate even beyond our projections because right now, those students are driving down to Pleasant Hill and Parkside. So Elementary Number Twenty-eight is projected to be needed in twenty-twenty in order to relieve overcrowding at Parkside and eventually overcrowding at Pleasant Hill. The next step is Elementary Twenty-nine. Now, this is a change in nomenclature from last year because we had two schools in one year called Twenty-nine and Thirty. We've now switched those numbers. So that's just semantics, but I didn't want you to get confused. So Number Twenty-nine is the, is the school that will be needed in Treviso. We have, so the construction of homes in Treviso proceeded almost exactly with our projections from last year, but they are ramping up as they get underway and are accelerating. So their plans are accelerating, so we have accelerated the need for this elementary school in Treviso to be needed in twenty-twenty-two. Without that, otherwise, Mason would be at about a thousand students. So the next step is Elementary Thirty in Bryson. This is projected to be needed in about twenty-twenty-four. This is one year later than we suggested last year for a number of different factors, mostly because it's so far out, lots of things changed, but also because the elementary zones for Elementary Twenty-Seven have been decided since we were here last. And so that changes everything as far as long-range planning.
When we, when you said Elementary Thirty in Bryson, you're not saying necessarily that site's already been pre-selected, that's just your suggested area? that site's already been pre-selected, that's just your suggested area, correct?
The district owns a site in Bryson.
Right. I know we have a site, I'm just saying, that would be your suggested area, not necessarily a done deal.
Certainly not.
I just, yeah, I just was noticing when we were going on, somebody was like, "I thought we were building one there, we were doing this there." And so I just wanted to make sure I know what's definite versus what we have made the decision.
The only thing that's definite is what you voted on.
Which is Elementary 27.
Yes, the small print, so the board has made no decisions regarding opening new schools or attendance zones.
Thank you, that'll say it's like 2011 right there.
There you go.
And we could just repeat that. I think it's really important, we've been trying to emphasize, when these reports come out, these are not attendance zones, these are catchment areas, the general areas by which we will be drawing students. The attendance zones will be done later and obviously approved by the Board of Trustees and made enacted. So these are just general areas where we need schools.
And 27 and 30 had a differential initial growth two years ago, and then the growth accelerated so much in the 27 catchment area.
Larkspur.
And other, three other subdivisions in that area. So, you know, that had a massive impact on need and, you know, and on the utilization of schools in that area.
So finally, the last step in this plan is well into the future, but in about 2026 or so, an additional, two more schools can be needed. One on the northwest, I mean northeast, northwest side, Elementary 31, that's up near Glenn High School. The district has many opportunities to find sites in suitable future development up in that area. Again, this is up North Baghdad Road and where ultimately, there will be an extension for San Gabriel Parkway and Lakeline. On the northeast side, Elementary 32 is projected to be needed about the same time as well. This area is, right now, has a few small growing attendance, I mean, subdivisions, Stewart Crossing and Marbella and Ridge Mar Landing that are there around Rouse High School. But they also have potential for additional future developments in which the district could purchase a school site.
Stacy, on Elementary 31?
Yes.
That has part of Nameless Road that goes through that? Did y'all take into consideration the widening of that?
Certainly, certainly. And there are a number of developments currently underway like Greatwood and Deerbrook, but also the lackey parcel that you haven't seen evidence of, but it has the potential to develop. So in summary, Elementary 27, opening next fall, is the first step. Elementary 28 on the northeast side, near Ronald Reagan and 2243, anywhere in that general area. Number 29 in Treviso in about fall of 2022. Number 30 in, somewhere in the green area, could be the site that the district owns in Bryson. And then 31 and 32 later in the projection period. And this compared to our recommendations last year is very similar, plus or minus one year in both directions for most of them, but no big massive changes since last year at the elementary level. So the middle school level, clearly, the middle schools in the north are projected to grow the most, not surprisingly. Leander, Wiley, and Stiles are all expected to exceed their 120% capacity threshold. Stiles will exceed that in about 2020, fall of 2020, followed shortly by, I'm sorry, Running Brushy and Leander both are expected to exceed that threshold shortly after Stiles. So middle school number nine is shown there in the light gray area of the site for middle school number nine, and that is scheduled to open in fall of 2020. The zoning process for middle school number nine is going to go, get underway shortly after winter break. It will be the same process as in past years. And so I say this in follow-up to what Dr. Troxell said earlier, and that is, I'm going to show you a catchment area for the opening of middle school nine. It is not an attendance zone. The process for deciding attendance zones will be the same as it has been in the past, and it will begin in January. I show you this because I need to be able to have something for you to look at to have the discussion about long-term growth. And so this is one of 1,000 different ways that the attendance zones could be drawn for middle school number nine. In this case, the opening of middle school number nine is used to relieve overcrowding at Running Brushy, Leander, Wiley, and Stiles. Now, I draw your attention to the middle school number nine, Wiley and Stiles number. In 2028, so at the end of this projection period, we are projecting those three schools to have over 1,500 middle school students living in those areas represented by those catchment areas. That's enough middle school students at the end of this decade for four middle schools. So middle school number 10 is still going to be needed somewhere in the northeast part of the district. Now, the attendance zones that will be decided by the regular attendance zone process, beginning in January, will have a major effect on the timing, the need for middle school number 10. But in general, that need will be in about 2024, 2025, in order to pull students out of middle school nine, Wiley and Stiles. Now, it seems that your first reaction might be that that's a lot of students to be moving again from middle school nine move to middle school 10 move. But I think it's important to have some perspective that in that sort of pink area represented by middle school number 10 catchment area, in 2024, we're projecting about 800 middle school students to live in that pink area. Right now, about 200 middle school students live in that pink area, and about 200 kindergarten through second graders, or whatever that range is, that will be there in 2024 as middle schoolers. So only a fourth of the population that will live in that pink area lives there right now. And so I just want to make that point that this is not going to be a huge double move because most of those kids don't live there yet, most of those houses don't exist yet. Okay? So as a review compared to last year, no major changes. We have accelerated a little bit the need for middle school number 10, but again, this could change dramatically next year after the decision has been made for the zones for middle school number nine. And so now we move on to the high school level. Again, Glenn and Rouse are projected to exceed their capacities within this decade, certainly. Glenn is projected to exceed 4,000 students by 2028. By about 2024, Glenn and Rouse are both projected to exceed their 120% threshold, so that's approximately when middle school number seven will be needed, also in the northwest part of the district. And this is a comparison to last year again. No change in the timing for high school number seven. However, I do point you back to the difference between the 2014 study and 2015 study. You'll see how we were saying prior that high school number seven was going to be necessary earlier, but then once the Glenn High School attendance zones were drawn and the district was able to best utilize all of the existing facilities, we could push off the need for high school seven by a couple of years. And so that illustrates what I was, the point I was making about the middle schools, that the decision that you make about middle school nine will impact and define the need for the timing of middle school 10. So at that, we can take any questions. Thank you for your attention.
Board members are of course welcome to ask questions. I might add that I've invited Dr. Troxell to include this item in our agenda at the next board meeting to give us all a little time to consume the materials that have been provided this evening and give us a little time to consider them as we discuss together further. But please feel free to ask any questions, particularly while we have our experts present in person.
Aaron, thank you for that suggestion. I think that's a great idea. I do have a question about the neighborhood. Last time, we spent a little bit of time, according to my notes, on the growth in the neighborhoods. I know we talked about multi-level, multiple family units, but I just want to make sure I understand the growth in the neighborhoods, where those housing units are, what you see as far as, last time, we talked a lot about Treviso, Larkspur, Bryson, and, yep, those were ours. And I noticed this time, we're talking about lackey a little bit more. So where would that find out on this page?
So we have, yes, we have a rank, and it's, you know, the, also the PowerPoint will be available, I know on our website by in the morning and probably on your website as well. So we have that rank in terms of numeric increase for those.
On page 39. We had a slide about that, but in the interest of time, we hid it. And that's why Pat's referring to the PowerPoint will be available online, and you'll be able to see that hidden slide.
And we did, we did show you one that was a little bit difficult because it was in alpha order, so we did show you that one, that slide, and it shows that Treviso is by far the leader, followed by Larkspur, followed by Archered Ridge, and it's Archered Ridge leaping forward that has affected number 27 as the next elementary because it has, well, in both cases, they have multiple builders now that are certainly affecting that school's future enrollment. And Bryson as well is increasing rapidly, and that will be your other location in that general part of the district. And it is also adding condos and with the potential for multifamily development as well. So that is another important master plan community. And then Deerbrook is just getting underway well, also in the north. Then the Giddens family, if there's any one group I would like to interview, it would be that family to find out a little bit more about their plans. They have a large number of parcels that are in the northwest of the district, just to the west of Baghdad. But of course, they have to help develop Lakeline to build on their parcels, so they've got a challenge there. Lakeline will be a costly endeavor, and they will be paying for part of it. And then Crystal Falls is diminishing in importance, but still has almost 500 lots. So those are the critical parcels that we know with a high probability are going to have a big influence on the district. Those are the ones that you should think about in terms of leaping forth and adding new homes.
I'm not sure if this is a question that can be answered without maybe some additional research, but tying the unemployment rate, the historic, you know, we have history of the unemployment rates, how sensitive is the unemployment rate to the impact on all of these projections?
Incredibly. Even a half a percent change has a big, big impact. And, you know, in my adult lifetime, Austin has always had a low unemployment rate. It's always, I mean, you know, it's been a state leader in low unemployment, but again, it's still a very sensitive measure and cannot be overemphasized in importance for suburban school districts. And we don't get that data easily for suburban locations unless the cities are large enough to, you know, that we are allowed to have the data.
And then a second follow-up to that would be impact of, because we're now starting to see interest rates move up.
Right.
How sensitive are interest rates to the overall projections? I'm just, I'm trying to tie.
That's such a good question. For our moderate growth scenario, the interest rate cannot rise more than 2%.
And where it is today?
Where it is today.
Okay.
Yes, sir. But we have a low-growth scenario and a high-growth scenario, and both are important because at least we hope to capture the enrollment between those two based on different sets of assumptions.
Okay. Appreciate it. Thank you.
So board members, we will place this obviously under operational discussion. If you could send to either Jimmy or myself any questions you have ahead of time, we have the two experts we'd like to rely on for detailed technical questions. If it's questions regarding building or sites we have or things of that nature, Jimmy and I will be able to answer those. I really want to thank Avasa for the work that you do. I think it's pretty remarkable, and Jimmy said it earlier, we're sitting at just 19 students above projection at this time. I will say we'll probably continue to grow throughout the year because we do grow virtually every single day. I said this before, but from the Christmas break to the end of the year, a year ago, Parkside grew one student every single day. So the growth in the northern part of the district is pretty phenomenal. As you can tell from this report, it's going to continue for the foreseeable future, and we have to make some decisions about zoning beginning in January, where Jimmy will start the process working with Matt to really formulate a plan and bring it back to you and involve the public as well as you very heavily in that process.
I just want to say thank you because as a board member, you make our jobs a lot easier by the monstrous amount of work that you do, and year after year, your numbers are so on target, and it's just a big help in the decision-making. Thank you.
We certainly enjoy working with Leander. It's very addictive to work with such a successful history.
Your accuracy is quite astounding, but I always enjoy taking the book with me, reading the details because those are a lot of questions you ask to get down to that level of detail. So we appreciate that.
One thing I don't see is the number of dogs and cats at each house.
That is becoming important. That's a good question.
Aaron, can we also get a copy of the slide on SharePoint as well, or the presentation? So I can match it up.
We have the presentation downloaded, and we will get that on SharePoint so you all can have it.
So it's the presentation, and the full document will also be available digitally on the website.
Correct. That's correct.
That's fine, yeah.
And there's no, when we bring this back operationally in two weeks, there's no action or anything that we have to take on this, right?
No, just a discussion item.
Okay.
You have to agree with the board.
Well, no, I'm thinking in terms of bouncing things off other board members.
And maybe one thing that would be constructive for board members as we look at this is just a reminder of our current real estate holdings relative to this report in a way that could highlight where we have parcels, what size they are, or what use they're sort of slotted for.
I think it would also be beneficial, of course, we'd have to do this because we're purchasing land in executive session so that we don't see prices escalate, but talk to you about where we're looking at some properties as well. But that would be in closed session.
Which, by the way, I think actually is, and we've done this historically, is a great topic for one of the, for the new board members, one of their first couple meetings just because, you know, they're going to have questions about where do we own land, and that's a great, great one to do, right about that timing.
Any other discussion for tonight, any other questions?
I wanted to know when they widen Nameless Road, if they're going to actually give it a name at that point.
I think Nameless is stuck.
That is historical.
All right. Thank you both. We appreciate you being here. All right, we will return to the sequence for our agenda. We'll go to Item A, District and Campus Improvement Plans.
Mr. President, members of the board, I'm going to invite our area superintendents to come up and join us tonight. As we presented last time with Mr. Graham and Ms. Cruz, we, over the past two years, have presented the District and Campus Improvement Plans in conjunction with accountability data. So at the last meeting, you received the accountability data overview for Leander ISD for the past year, and also received the District and Campus Improvement Plans. The purpose of that was to show the alignment between what we have for our superintendent performance goals and our accountability data with the improvement plans that you see in front of you. So over the last two weeks, hopefully you've had a chance to review these items. Tonight, we are just here to simply answer any questions that you would like us to answer based on that two-week period.
I had one question about the formative and summative reviews. I would assume that we'll be bringing each of those, the results of those reviews back to the board, correct?
For the District and Campus Improvement Plans, those are checkmarks that we do along the way as an internal process. We could provide an update to the board if you would like, in whether it be a Friday memo or something to that effect, but typically, we have not come back on a quarterly basis to provide you the progress on all of the improvement plans.
Okay.
The only comment I had, and I've already spoken with Sarah about it, a tremendous amount of work.
of work, as always, thank you. But it seemed to be a little different this year when you were going in there and they wanted to jump two percent, and some campuses went to jump twenty-seven percent. And I didn't know what the benchmark was that we were jumping. So that was, that was my question for the year.
I would think, the conversations I've had with individual principals have been looking at their campus data, and some may already be at the upper part of it. Maybe they're at ninety-seven, ninety-eight percent. So they're wanting to sustain that growth in approaches, but maybe increase in masters. Whereas other campuses, it may be if they're looking at their approaches level, there may be a goal of ten to fifteen percent growth. So I would think it just honestly would determine, depend on the individual campus, the conversations with the campus leaders, the principal, the site-based committees, and in conversations that they feel are attainable goals for each individual campus.
I would think, just for the help of the board and the public looking at that, if there was just a sentence saying the goal was based on, we met or didn't meet, or we wanted to increase from this number to this number. Because there's a big difference increasing, if someone wants to say two percent from ninety-five to ninety-seven, I mean, that's a hard jump. But if you don't know why they want to increase thirty percent, I'm questioning my head, where were we?
Yes, ma'am.
So I just think having with the base of what they're increasing from.
Pam, I, I think that's a really good point. We could add that to, you know, future campus improvement plans. We have met, both individually, principals have met with the area superintendents, as well as the small groups, the principals have presented to a larger group, including myself. It gets down to actually looking at individual students and their growth projections based on the data analysis that we now do. So there is a great deal of detail that is involved in those projections. And it is simply a matter of looking at our kids on a campus actually maximizing their potential. If they are at ninety-five percent, you may say, I just want to maintain.
Right. I just, I just want to know with the base.
Right. I just want the public to hear the larger discussion, because I think it's a great question. And I think it's a question that gets fundamentally down to how do we improve each campus? I think it's the core essential of what we do, so I appreciate you asking it. And I do really appreciate the principal spending a lot of time with her teachers, because the ultimate determination of that is whether a teacher really believes a child's going to grow enough in a year to pass. Now, the thing that would caution us all about, we've said this from the very beginning, as we set our goals, it's not about passing. It's not about masters level, it's about growth. And if a student is growing consistently over a period of years and hasn't yet passed, that's still a success story. We want to get that child to the point where they are passing, so when they hit upper elementary, middle school, and high school, they're consistently passing the test. The kids that are passing it, we want to get them to the masters level. We want to move their, increase their performance. Ultimately, if they're doing very, very well, because there's now a correlation between these state tests and the PSAT and ACT and SAT type performances, we'll see the number of National American Scholars that came here tonight increase as well. So it is the essence, I mean, the question is wonderful. We do need to expand on that because it's the essence of what we do.
I did notice some principals mentioned a year's worth of growth. But then again, I didn't know.
From what baseline? Yeah, yes. Absolutely. That's a great point. We'll make sure that that's added for the future.
So I have four things that I just absolutely adored as I was reading through this that I want to make sure I highlight. I love, 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 love the fact as, as we discuss survey data here, just a few meetings, it was our last meeting, we talked about some results in surveys. And I'm seeing the campuses saying, okay, we want to improve some of these things exactly, right? So you talked about quality of resources, bullying, and safety, teachers showing how lessons relate to life outside the classroom, like I saw that actually pulled out. And that was just really cool, the kind of, get to see that consistency, right? That pull-through was just amazing. I also like seeing the items that were focusing on our teacher surveys, where they're working on increasing employee engagement, increasing open communication, those that feel that they have adequate resources. And I saw that in, you know, just different reports. So that was great to see. And again, the focus on extracurricular, some schools even, and, and everybody does their own different thing to reflect their community, but they would pull out like what extracurricular or co-curricular activities or enrichments they have on their campuses. And so that was, I enjoyed looking through that and going, oh, well, this campus has something different over here than this campus. It was, it was a really good report to read through for that. And I really also enjoyed seeing the student populations. It seems like we're really looking at underserved student populations in some of the areas. We're really pulling that out in the data. I don't know if we see that yet at a board level where we're looking at all those different populations, but it really showed through here on these reports. You could really see it. So, big shout-out for that. I do have a question, of course. As I'm looking at what the campuses are saying, like their goal levels are, and then I look at how our district plan is set up, well, I really like the campus. I think it has some interesting discussion, but ours seem different. So when I look at their goal, one, two, three, four, five, our goal, one, two, three, and four, five, or seem a little, they, they seem a little different when you get into them, like their performance objectives or how they're pulling out some of these things different. I get, I get the actual titles the same, but it just seems the, the information, I'm just trying to get at, some of the things we're looking at on a campus level, then these plans are really cool, but I don't see them, see it yet getting at a district level where we're discussing it at a board level. And so some of those things, which might come in the surveys, right? But what we're seeing, how are students feeling, their, their classroom, you know, experiences relating to real life, we don't really judge that at a superintendent goal.
So can I ask Trish's question a different way?
Thank you.
If you don't mind.
Sure.
Can you explain to us, how do principals come up with the specific performance objectives that are listed here? I mean, she's exactly right. The top level goals are the same, but how do they choose and customize for their campus? And then, that's part one of the question.
And before you answer that, that kind of ties into the question that I was asking.
Okay, go ahead and ask your question, because I'm asking a question about your question.
Well, it was how, how do we measure that? How, how do we have the discussion? That's why I was asking about this. Because I saw in one of the reports where you had the actual checkboxes for formative and summative. And I was, well, is that our chance to get at the questions that Trish is asking?
So let me start with the last question first, and then I'll let you.
Sorry, Will.
I don't like that, but I'll tell you.
It's important that we have it. You're not going to have necessarily at the board level, the deep dive discussions on the campus improvement plans. The campus improvement plans are presented to you for review so you understand what's happening at campuses. The deep dive isn't even at the superintendent level. Deep dive is the area superintendents. They really go over and sit down and go into great detail with the principals and their teachers about what's happening. What we do as a team of eight is to look at these campus improvement plans to see, are they aligning up with our, our district improvement plan, which really is tied to our eighteen performance goals and eventually our seven goals in our vision statement. So there could be times when certainly if you wanted to have a discussion, and you had some really questions about what was happening on a campus, that I would think would be very appropriate to call an area superintendent and say, tell me what's happening at Giddens and this. It sounds very interesting. I will tell you that as a district, what we're doing now is a tremendous amount of sharing across campuses. So those meetings that we have, the area superintendent's set up with the entire cabinet level coming in for the most part, are opportunities for principals to share across seven or eight campuses. Then, in our staff development day in November, I'm really excited because we're going to have opportunities for even more sharing, because teachers are going to be getting down to the level of their best lessons and things that they're doing of that nature. Let you guys go on. And John has an, a chance to talk at all, y'all, so he may want to say something back there.
Unless John wants to, I'm happy to take the phone.
No, go ahead.
I'm used to that.
Oh, that is, oh, nice.
He's not going to take the mic from you.
Okay. So first of all, the process that we start with are the superintendent performance goals, because that has been set here at this board level as what we are measuring in our district. So our campus principals start with that, and then they go through their data dig, and looking at what does their campus data say in relation to the superintendent performance goals, and starting to identify where are the, the areas that they want to focus based on the student need, what, what it says in the data. So it does definitely start from the superintendent performance goals. So you see that alignment throughout, but you do see the variation because our campuses are different and their needs are different based on student performance, student needs, and such.
So based on that, then I'm going to give my follow-up question, and I'm going to direct it to John, which is, to see your clue, my actual question, I think you answered it to some extent. How involved are, are our area superintendents in doing this? I mean, y'all are great, and give the credit to the principals for the work they're doing, but, but I really want to understand your role in developing, like, you know, are you intimately involved as these get developed and then looking at these across your campus? So if you could describe that to me a little bit.
Yes, sir. We begin in early summer, working with, with our principals. It's usually around the first week of the summer break, we bring all of our principals together. The, the three of us are there. We, we include our teaching and learning staff and, and staff from our, our data staff from, from instructional technology. And we all come together with our principals. We ask our principals to bring their teams. So that may be their, their assistant principals, their deans, instructional coaches, and they may actually even bring teachers. And we start to look at all the data that we have within our system, perceptual and performance. And taking each goal, we start to break down that data with them. It's, it's really just the first opportunity to start. And then we have checklists throughout the summer and the beginning of the school year on items that we would like to have been completed by a certain time. So that gives us an opportunity to go back and work with the principals and determine where they are at in the development of their plans. So we can ask those questions and, and really see how they are involving this, their staff in the development of the plans. And we have workshops throughout the summer and the beginning of the school year where principals can come and work with us and our teaching and learning and ITS staff. So they can ask questions and we can dig into the data together. And so we are highly involved in the process. It's more guiding and asking reflective questions and giving them opportunities to, to work with us. And so you can, we send out the calendar to them early in the, or late in the, in the school year, so they can start planning those out with their staff, so we can come together and work. And then we have our individual one-on-ones where we work with principals also, looking at the plans as they start to develop them.
May I just go back to the question? There'll be a summary chart put together by school?
What'll be a summary chart put together by school?
This, this is a summary chart that you see in here, Donnie.
I mean, all the detail, all you just read through, everyone, and you can't tell unless you read every item lineup of whether they're doing okay or not.
Well, and that's where we go back as a team and sit down with those individual principals. And we are doing it at least two times a year with the entire group that you see here, that's the cabinet level. Sometimes with some of the schools, as much as four times a year. This process has always occurred in some form. The district has been doing this for some time. There have been some major changes in the last two years, and I want to just point those out. The first change is that you set goals. And so we had to, at that point, have discussion of how do we align the district goals down to the campus goals. I will tell you, now, teachers are setting goals based on the goals that you set for me, because they know that we want to have increased performance within their areas. So they're actually setting target goals as well. That means that we need to really have set our superintendent performance goals by mid to late spring so that we can then meet with our principals in the early summer to go through the process of developing the, the campus improvement plans. That is a major change when you adopted superintendent performance goals. The second thing that's big is we've always had data. We've had a lot of data. I would call it data engineering. We have data in storage and data available. The difference we have today is data analysis. We're taking the data and saying, okay, it's nice to have this data, but what do I do with the data? So we're applying that information to outcomes that we want to see at each campus. And that's, goes back to Pam's question, I think is at the essence of what we're trying to get to. How do we set these targets? How do we get to the actual level of what we want to perform? We are still growing in that area. There's a lot of growth to do. But it's just fantastic to see principals sit down and say, you know, my campus is a top-rated campus, and we have a lot of those campuses. We are scoring at the ninety-five percentile in most areas, but how do we get to the ninety-seven percentile? Or how do we go from sixty percent of our kids getting mastery to seventy percent of our kids getting mastery? Or how do we increase the perception of safety on our campus among our student body, particularly at the high school level, or the perception of the principal's performance, or the perception of their teacher's performance? So there is some really targeted discussions that are now happening. And then the principals have set up a tier, I'm sorry, the area superintendents have set up a tiered level of intervention with principals. So that the first tier is where we meet in large groups, and then it gets all the way down to the finest tier where they have to sit down and sit with principals. The other thing we've done, and Matt and I have really tried to work on this, is to protect the area superintendent's time. We want them on a campus two to three times a week. We want them out of our building two to three times a week. And that's happening now. We're there. It's not that we don't want them around. We want them working directly with principals. And the, the ultimate layer of that, for me, is then you walk classrooms. And you see, is the information being placed in this piece of paper in terms of our goals actually happening in the room? Is there alignment with the curriculum that's been approved and what's being taught in the classroom? And is it at a high rigor level? And I know rigor isn't always the term that is, is acceptable across the state, so people call it challenge. But are we challenging kids just to be on where they are? So we push them to a higher level of achievement. I think that's one of our biggest challenges, is to constantly increase that, that level of expectation for our kids without hitting that tipping point where it becomes so stressful they don't function properly. And that's going to vary by school and probably by even classroom within a school. And the teachers at the high school, middle school, they teach multiple sections, even within different sections. So there is really a systemic approach now that we've really tried to take to improve classroom instruction, starting with superintendent performance goals.
If I may throw one other thing into it, I, I want to give our area superintendents credit. Not only do they set aside those coaching days, and their two days a week where they're out on campuses, working with principals, and they meet with every principal at least once a month on these things. Every other week, I go out with them and meet with them on a campus, and we talk specifically about that campus, their actual campus improvement plan, what they're trying to achieve on that. So they are able to see even schools outside of the schools that they're supervising. So they're constantly calibrating their efforts that they do in the coaching visits with each of the individual principals. So I give them a lot of credit in, over the last two years of really developing a, a high-quality system of making sure that we're taking the board goals and the superintendent performance goals and seeing them come to fruition in our campus.
And I do have a question, and just to try to go back to Claire, and Will got at it, but I want to make sure I, I add a few blind points on it, which is, I'm, I'm reverse engineering is my question, which says, when we pull up superintendent performance goals, as a board, if we start tweaking things, I want to know how that's going to impact this, because I really like the product I see here. There are times when I'm looking at this, and I'm like, I don't, this, oh, I'm sorry. Can't see that. But y'all probably guessed. It's our student, it's our superintendent performance goals, right? The district improvement, when you're looking at those, and when I look at what our campuses, I don't necessarily see the natural link. I know there is a link, but what I'm saying is, if we start making tweaks, I want to know if it's going to impact it, because I like what the campuses, I like the deep dives, I like what you're doing. So I just, I want to, I want to better understand that alignment, and when we shift certain ways, how that might affect this alignment.
I do think it.
Not tonight, by the way.
Right. Just to, just to briefly say this, though, what I would say is, in this whole process, and I think John hit this the last time when we presented last, at the last meeting, in the, in the process of developing all this, when you start with the board goals and then expand more to the superintendent performance goals, the district and campus improvement plans are an expansion of even that. So you get the unique needs of each campus, the flavor of each campus in their campus improvement plan. So there's some strengths of one campus that they may not have something written into their campus improvement plan because they've done that well for a long period of time, whereas they might have something you don't see in all the other campuses. So it allows us to get the unique needs of each campus, and I think that's what you're mentioning. Like, there's some great things going on on the campus.
Right.
And you're very happy with those campus improvement plans. I think that's due to the system that's created because there's enough direction from our board saying, these are our board goals, but also enough flexibility for our campus to tailor those and make them malleable enough to meet their individual needs as a school community.
And then the, and by the way, that's great. The other one I say, I'd like to see is, I agree that we don't need to see like everything that's going on necessarily per campus or presentation on everything that's there. But I really appreciated the discussion on subpopulations and how we're meeting subpopulations. And I would like to see that come before the board at a district level of how we're meeting the various subpopulations. We just, just did such a good job, I think, in some of yours, drawing it out. That might be interesting to pull before the board.
And that certainly could be a part of one of the superintendent performance calls as we, as we move forward. I think it would be a very appropriate thing to look at and how we parcel that out within which goal.
Yeah. I think that's worth additional discussion at a future date. I think we're used to seeing that as a component of a variety of presentations we receive throughout the year, but want to make sure that exactly what Trish is looking for is reflected in that, that cycle. It's already been said, but I'll say it one more time because it's so important to me. The most exciting thing about all of this is the alignment. The most exciting thing about all of this is the alignment. I think when the board is able to establish its goals and the superintendent performance goals alongside those, and then it goes down to the next level and the next level, and it's in the classrooms, as board members, we feel like we actually are having an influence in the direction that we're providing as we meet together and talk about the goals for our system. It's great to see those reflected throughout the entire system. And we know that the organization and coordination of our effort against those things in a common way consistently is going to produce better results. So very exciting for me and I think for our board as well.
I made that the board approve the district and campus goals and objectives presented.
One second.
A motion by Pam and a second by Jim. All in favor? Any opposed? Seven in favor, none opposed?
Mr. President, if I may too, I also just want to acknowledge Sarah Martinez is a key leader for us in our I T S department, and she has done an outstanding job and continues to do an outstanding job in helping us not only with our district improvement plan, but with the data that we need for all of our campuses on a regular basis. And as Dan said, we are constantly working on addressing those data needs. And she and the team that works with her, Brenda Cruz, Emily Gray, they've all done an outstanding job.
Thank you, Sarah.
And our area superintendent.
Thank you.
Amazing.
All right, we'll proceed to our curriculum management audit report item.
Mr. President, members of the board, we have Dr. Benz, Ms. Collins, and Ms. Carleen here tonight to walk you through next steps in our curriculum management audit and specifically about some curricular changes that are happening in our state.
Matt's the deficit audit.
I did not mention that tonight, but I, since you said it, I will point out that this was a deficit audit that we did back in November of 2016, and here we are talking about it.
And I'd just like to point out the deficit audits are intentionally looking at deficits, so please don't take that as reflection.
Yes, you're absolutely correct, sir.
Sure, I understand.
You stole my only joke, so it's going to completely say-
Well, that was no joke.
I have the spot, insert Matt Smith joke here, in parentheses. So now I will not do that. As you already have discussed, we did go through curriculum management audit a little while back. And based on the first two standards in particular and recommendations in the audit, as well as requirements delineated in our new L I S D curriculum policy E H that we worked on collaboratively with some of the trustees and administration, we are here today, or this afternoon, evening now, sorry, we're coming off the bench on this one, evening now, to update you, the Board of Trustees regarding upcoming changes to the language arts teacs as we prepare to go out to research and investigate and ultimately adopt new textbooks and resources for English language arts and Spanish language arts. So we're going to talk to you about the new E L A and S L A teacs today.
All right, so the state board has been working for several years trying to figure out how they want to structure and organize the language arts teacs. And as Matt mentioned, we're talking about English language arts and Spanish language arts. Specifically tonight, we're talking about kindergarten through eighth grade. So we want to show you the different strands that the state has organized under. So our current strands are familiar, reading, writing, those types of things. And you'll notice with the new strands, they've really thought differently about the way that they want to organize what it is that we want our students to know. So of course, we do still want our students reading and writing, but those skills are underneath each one of these strands. So for example, under comprehension, you will be reading, and then there were comprehension strands from your reading, but there are also comprehension strands under writing because the, one of the ways that you will show your understanding about your reading is through your writing, right? So they're really trying to embed their reading and writing and everything else instead of seeing reading and writing as separate.
What we have here is T E A, when they release the new standards, the new teacs, there is usually an introduction paragraph that starts out each of the teacs for the different grade levels. And so we've pulled two excerpts from the introduction paragraph that T E A put out because we want to emphasize some changes that have occurred here. And so if you look at that first excerpt there, one of the things that our students has to do is they talk about, there's a focus on academic oracy. So the students not only have to read and understand what they're reading, but they need to be able to talk and write about it as well. And so you're really taking it to another level there with what the students are going to be asked to do. In addition to that, it talks about authentic reading. And so what that, where that is a little bit different is authentic reading, when we're looking at our authentic texts, these could be books that could be standalone, or they could be included in our basal or anthology, our traditional textbooks that we buy. So if you, one of the examples we've been using with other groups that we've been taking through this presentation is Diary of Anne Frank. It can stand on its own, a lot of our textbooks have that inserted in there. But what we also find is some of our textbooks are basals. The publishers will hire people to write stories specifically for that textbook or specifically for that particular basal. Those are not what we would necessarily call authentic texts because they're not standing alone. They're not something that you can go out and just buy in a bookstore, or that's a natural type of text that a student might encounter outside of the school. And so really looking at that authentic reading is going to make an emphasis on the types of reading that the students need to be doing inside the classroom. That second excerpt there really emphasizes cross-curricular content and student choice, which is something different that we don't necessarily see all the time, but it's not just, I'm reading in reading class, but I'm, could be reading in science, and I could be reading in social studies. And so it's really, how are we looking cross-curricular with our content areas there? And then also, how do students have a voice and choice in what they're going to read, right? So what we really like about this introduction paragraph and the changes to the standards is we feel that we can really see our engage, inspire, and achieve through here because you can engage students by their student choice, you can inspire them through the authentic texts, and then they are really going to be able to achieve and move to that next level when they are reflective writing and having to express orally about their reading.
I have a question here, just a thought, maybe you can help me with it. So we're going to change the teacs. How does this get translated to the STAR? And I ask it for this reason. Lot of conversation over the last years, just talking about the math teacs, that a lot of comprehension of reading has to be done in order to handle the math teacs. Is the STAR going to reflect this also in all these other subjects?
Right, so usually when you see a change in your standards, you will also see a change in the way that the assessment, the, in the STAR assessment is written. And so for instance, even just with the types of standards that they are testing, so one big standard in E L A across the board has been Figure 19. That's always been huge. It's about inferencing. It's been a big piece that for many years across the state, we've been working on. That particular figure, which really isn't a figure, but that particular piece will be going away, and it will be embedded in the comprehension strand. And so because of that, you will see some similarities in the way it's tested, but not the exact same. There will be some changes, and you'll see some reflection in that particular piece. You'll probably see a little bit more authentic pieces, what they're going to have to write about with their prompts, things of that sort will also be changed as a reflection of these teacs.
Krista and I got to go to Texas A S C D over the weekend. One of the things that we learned is that, so these new standards are implemented in 1920. So the spring of 20, the state is only allowed to assess the standards that overlap the old standards and the new standards. So if you'll remember back, you were talking about the math new standards, that first year, they were only allowed to test what was in the old and what was in the new. So that's going to happen as well. It'll be interesting to see what happens with accountability. They haven't made any announcements about the impact, but we would anticipate that there may be an impact there as well, where then the next spring, they would test only on the new standards. So there's kind of an overlap or a gap here for that, for the assessment.
I would suggest administration, when we really start getting into this and the actual adoption happens, that we start having a conversation with our parents so it's not such a surprise on the STAR this time of the difference of how they're testing these subjects. I think preparation may help some of the anxiety later on.
Yes, absolutely. So what, this particular presentation that you're seeing tonight and some of the background about the changes in the standards, we have also already presented to our D W I committee to start those conversations early so that people will know what's coming and what are some of those changes. And we'll continue to have those conversations with them. And then we will also be presenting to our Citizens Curriculum Advisory Committee as well, so that, same thing, because we want to make sure that our parents and everyone have an understanding of the changes and what to expect in the coming years with this.
I think one of the other things that we need to look at is how we can use our social media as well as some recordings to get out to the community so they can go into our website, go into social media, and we're actually talking to them about what's happening. I think this is going to be a very important aspect of moving forward because not everyone can go to a D W I meeting or go to our C I C meetings. But we do periodically put out different things that the superintendent does. Cory's team is great at helping me do that. This may be one where I want you to do it with me, and we get some information out directly to parents that we push out through some of our resources that we have available. It's not urgent to do it right now, but before we start doing the testing, we'd want to do that.
Absolutely.
So I really believe it's going to be critical because it wasn't just the Leander issue, the parents having concerns. We heard it across the entire state, and I certainly heard it even in a small district before I arrived here. So we will make sure that we access all those avenues.
So beginning last spring, our language arts leaders started collaborating with other leaders from around the state and frequently with leaders from around our area in the area of language arts to look at the new standards and analyze them and begin to try to cluster them together in groups that would make sense, that would eventually become our new units of study. Then this summer, they started working with teachers and our curriculum design process to begin doing that same work together at the classroom level. So this graphic isn't meant to be able to see all of the details, but what we want to show you is maybe some instructional implications as we think about an instructional model with the new standards. So as you look down the slide, the blue bar says reading up at the top. So whenever we're thinking about instructional materials that we're going to need to adopt, we're going to need to think specifically about reading and what is it for reading that our students need in the classroom? And then that yellow bar in the middle says writing at the top, so what is it for writing that we need in the classroom? And then that orange bar over on the right says phonics and word study. So what is it for phonics? When is it for spelling that we're going to need for our students, thinking about instructional resources? But then as you look horizontally across the graphic, you can see that in a workshop model, we're not only thinking about whole group instruction, which is that top layer, but then also thinking about small group instruction, thinking about individual work that students will be doing, and then coming back together for that whole group at the end of the class period or at the end of the day. So as we think about instructional resources, there are going to be some things that we're going to need to have 25 or 30 copies of in a classroom because it's for the whole group instruction, but there are going to be other things that single copies are going to be fine because it's things that we expect students to be doing on their own, or maybe we need six or eight copies of something because it's for a small group. So as Krista mentioned earlier, a basal textbook may meet the needs for some of these things, but it's going to be interesting as we go through this adoption process, what is it that's really going to meet the needs of all of these different pieces in the classroom?
And as you're going through the adoption process, oh, good discussion.
Yep.
As you're going through the adoption process, is it going to be teachers, a committee, parents, is it D W I? How are we, what's the, are you already started? And what is that, just kind of a high level of, who's all involved in that?
Yeah, so we do have the adoption committee that's already coming together, and so that's made up of a teacher from every campus in our system, K through eight, so they all have a representative. Our bilingual campuses actually have two representatives because they have someone representing the Spanish language arts standards as well as the English language arts standards. They've come together twice where they began to kind of dig into these new standards and what do they mean. They've had some of the same presentations that you guys have received about T I M A and the funding, and what does all of this mean for adoption? But then they've also begun to cluster some of the standards and try to figure out what could this look like for units of study. They're also thinking about rubrics. So what are the needs? And we're surveying every language arts teacher in our system right now. We're in the middle of the surveying process for needs assessment. What is it that you have right now that you feel like we can continue to use because it's just fine the way that it is? And then what are the areas in language arts where you really feel like we need to consider something new or different or in addition to what we currently have? So every language arts teacher in our system will eventually be a part in lots of different ways. So through the surveying right now, they'll eventually sample our materials. In the future, parents will also have an opportunity to look through our materials and provide feedback as well. So it's a comprehensive process that will include everyone who would teach language arts as well as all the parents and other stakeholders in our system.
I'm guessing the survey to teachers and getting theirs, that's going to be a different timeline maybe than say, probably when the parents are looking at something, it's probably gone down.
Exactly.
And how will we solicit parent feedback? Will that be something that's on our website, or how do we, how do we get that done?
Lots of different ways.
So usually what we, what we usually do is we have opportunities in our committees where we have parents and community members served. But in addition to that, around January, we usually give an update, put it on our website, allow parents to come in. A lot of resources now, when we're looking at them, regardless of content area, many of them are online, and we'll give you some online access. So we will have generic codes for them to be able to go in, and then there are forms where they can submit feedback. In addition, we usually have any hard copies of those available at our central offices as well as another school in our district. So regardless, if you're in the north or south, you have access to those hard copies and can come in, review those, and then give some feedback as well. And so we leave that open almost an entire month for the community to be able to review and submit feedback to us.
Krista, just also, like you said before, that you will be bringing it to D W I multiple times as well as the Citizens Curricular Advisory Committee to take deeper dives into the resources as we explore them.
Mm-hmm. Cool.
Very good.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Good job.
Next item on our agenda is the Legislative Committee Update Report.
Good evening, President Johnson, Trustees. Dr. Troxel, I'm here to give a quick little update and let our committee members give you all, lead the discussion about our legislative committee's progress. Just to give you an overview of what our task is, is to create a legislative priority document that will represent the interests of this district and this board during the upcoming legislative session for the state of Texas. In coming up with our various draft or proposed legislative priorities, we broke it down into three sections and then an additional nine subsections. The main areas would be safety, education, and finance. And as you can see, underneath those would be student data privacy, facilities, under safety, under education, accountability, mental health, special education, dual credit and career technical education, and then under finance, T R S and teacher healthcare, funding, local control for elections. We've met twice so far and had some really great meetings on October 10th and October 23rd to discuss the legislative priorities we had. From the last legislative session, we looked at some of our peer districts and some of our partner organizations like TASSA and TASB to see what kind of verbiage they have. Mr. Yanda, Dr. Troxel, and I have been working with Ms. Wagner, Ms. Bode, and Grace Barbara Jordan. We're at the point now where we're reporting to the Board of Trustees to kind of give you an idea of where we're at. Tomorrow, we plan to send the draft of the legislative priorities to the entire board for review, and then the committee is asking that we bring that forth on November 9th for possible adoption. Due to the tight timeline in the legislative session coming up, this would allow us the opportunity to be able to get these in front of legislators as soon as possible.
Trish, are these aligned with our Central Texas School Board Association?
Yeah, I mean, yes, they're along, I mean, anything that's talking about educating our students and what our district needs. Yes, but it's not, when the committee sat, we talked about making it what Leander, what's unique to Leander I S D students and what we need. So that being said, I guess the one thing I would tell all members are, this isn't comprehensive. We're not going to have every single thing that you've seen in TASB or C T S B A or any of the other districts. We don't have every item in here. We really looked at what we feel the district needs to look at or address and kind of fine-tuned or focused it that way.
I think, yeah, and when you get the drafts tomorrow, there'll be click on sections that you can go in and read about the background and why we're asking and trying to keep it really comprehensive and really quick.
You'll get excited. It'll be like, oh, financing, well, then we set all of this, and we didn't, we narrowed it down. We said, here's, here's some real areas that we need to focus on. Special education, I would love to go talk to T E A about special education. That isn't one of our legislative priorities that Trish needs to go talk to them. But, you know, we'd looked at as a focus, what issues are in our district that we need to focus on right now? And we will be, as I think we said this too, there's nothing to prevent us, once legislative session gets going, if we start seeing something develop, that we can come back and look at this and go, okay, now we need to add X, Y, Z. I think we've got a foundation. I think we've got a foundation, and I'm hoping we'll be able to maybe add some extra things as time goes along.
So what we were trying to develop was a one-pager, basically front and back, and that's what you'll see tomorrow with an opening statement, and then eventually add more detail to that as we move forward with lakes and so forth. There is some legislation, when we bring it to you the next time, that we're going to actually ask to have bills drafted and prepared because there's some very specific things, for example, on student data privacy, that we want to get in front of members of the legislature with a draft that they could readily take and file. So there's been, there's been very yeoman's work by the three board members, and we appreciate their work, and we're certainly looking forward to getting the initial draft out to you tomorrow.
So just to clarify, what's the process for the other board members who have not participated in the committee to help influence the ultimate content of this document? If we get the draft tomorrow, November 9th is adoption, but we won't really have had a chance to discuss it prior, so just trying to understand timeline.
I believe we talked about, Danny, correct me, that we'll get it out tomorrow, we'll put it out in Friday memos, you'll have plenty of time to.
Yeah, we'll have plenty of time to read it, but when we come back together on the 9th, we'll only have had a chance to read it previously. We won't have discussed it previously, and so just trying to understand.
It's always for other board members' input to it.
That's right, that's right.
Well, if we put it on consent, we don't have to worry about that.
There you go.
The goal was that when we met on the 9th, which is one of the last times that we'll be together as a group, that you would have an opportunity to discuss it at length at that time, and then we would ask for approval. Normally, we give it to you and then have two weeks later that you would have an opportunity to vote on it. Because of the timeline and because of the upcoming changes potentially, at least we know on two board members, as well as the need to get this in front of people that have to draft some legislation for us, time is getting of the essence. And it's not that we have been delayed, it's just a, it takes a while to develop a two-page document that you narrowed down from many, many documents that came before us. So we would ask that you review it, provide feedback to Cory. Cory will bring that to the larger, the smaller group that's meeting, and then we'd have additional conversation on the 9th.
And Erin, I'm not speaking for the whole committee, so y'all can feel free to speak out, but I would, if it was me and I wasn't on the committee, I would look at and say, if any of these calls me heartburn, I'd rather have it off. You know, is there something that you're really, you know, you're thinking we're really missing a mark, or you're looking at, you're like, wait, let me show you this perspective on it? But I think the goal was is to kind of get something boilerplate. I really do anticipate that we might have to come back as session goes, and you know, there might be pieces that we say, hey, we really want to make sure we advocate on this.
I think that's great. I mean, I know you guys have done good work. I have no doubt about that. Just candidly, Slide 2 and the handful of words that are on Slide 2 are all I really have to go on tonight in terms of what that document's going to be, and then we're going to adopt something on the 9th. And so I'm just trying to understand the process for myself and the other board members who've not been in that committee to provide input. Maybe I would suggest that if Cory could be the collection point, board member comments about this could be communicated to Cory. Cory could communicate them back to the rest of the board in a collected fashion periodically as we prepare for the meeting on the 9th, just to give everyone insight into some of the other feedback or comments that board members may provide. Is that fair?
Yeah, and you can do a draft form, and then if we need to toy get her out or track or whatever. The three, three ones.
You?
Pam, Grace, and Trish were on the table.
And Dan, and Cory, and Lucas.
And I think there's great work done. I just know there's more that I would like to see us do later, but maybe it doesn't work. You have to watch the legislative session unfold. You have to watch how the bills come out, and then, and then I would like to see, you know, at that time, do we, what else do we do?
Well, being a little more narrow-focused, I'm really excited about the draft legislation for the student data privacy. That, that's front and center and first and foremost beyond all of this. So I'm really excited that we're moving forward with something like that.
And that's one of the bill templates we'll be doing as well.
Okay. Other discussion on this item for tonight? Great, great work, committee. Thank you. Next is approval of class size waivers.
It's going to take a while. So we continue to monitor our class sizes. We do have an additional six sections that have exceeded the 22 to 1 ratio. We are asking for action tonight. If you have any questions, we did include an additional report to hopefully address the board's questions from the last meeting.
Mr. President, I move that the board approve the class size compliance plan and submit an application to the Texas Education Agency with class size waivers at the elementary campuses as presented.
I'll second.
Motion by Will, second by Dawn. Any further discussion?
I'd just like to thank Carrie Lynn for the graph.
Yes, thank you.
All right, all in favor? Any opposed? Seven in favor, none opposed? Thank you. We'll proceed to the hazardous route committee update report.
Good evening, board members. Tonight, we're going to give an update on the hazardous route committee and the progress and the process the committee has been making. They've been doing a lot of hard work and is ready to put a draft matrix up on the website to get public community feedback. And so we've invited Sean Cranston to, from the committee, to actually come and speak about the process and the, everything that has been going on with the committee.
And Sean, thank you for your work, but also for the other members of our community who have volunteered. If you may recall, Sean was also co-chaired the BON committee that passed recently. He has children in our district, and he's been an invaluable resource for us, so thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you for the opportunity.
And one thing, I just wanted to refresh everybody's memory. You know, the committee is composed of 16 members. We have nine that were selected and volunteered from the DEWIC committee and then also seven from the staff side, and so they've been very hard at work. And so, Eric.
Hello. So, thank you. We have had the opportunity to meet twice now. Our first meeting was on the 9th of October. The administration staff that were with us in the committee meeting basically provided us an opportunity to review your existing policy. The policy basically in broad strokes says that the state of Texas requires students that are beyond the two-mile radius to be bused. However, if you are within a two-mile radius and you have certain hazardous conditions, which are determined at your local district level, additional transportation funding may be available to allow you to provide for transportation for students. Then we went through and we provided what we call the scoring matrix using both, reviewed how you currently do it. Right now, you provide a system, grid system, where you go through certain lengths, obstacles, opportunities, hazards, and so on. They have numerical value. At the end of it, there's the points are accumulated, and if you're certain, over a certain threshold, it's deemed non-hazardous. If it's or hazardous, there's a bit of leeway in the middle at discretion for administration to make a decision. We had the opportunity to review several other districts, both locally, including Austin, Dripping Springs, Flugerville, and Round Rock, and also we reviewed Frisco. We saw earlier Frisco would be considered what we call an environmental peer to you, both in demographics as well as size. And from there, we had a group activity where we cross-pollinated and we looked at positives and negatives for each of them. We came up with an overall matrix recommendation, strengths, weaknesses of each, and then provide that back to staff. We met the following week and basically looked at an amalgamated package, taking the strengths and weaknesses of each of the various peer groups we looked at, and we applied, I'm going to call a critical look, to decide where we're in concurrence as a group and where we would differ. The groups were then split into two. We compared and contrasted and came back together as one to provide an updated draft matrix copy, which is included in your package. Basically, the staff then provided the matrix back to us with the modifications we recommended. We had an online discussion, and tonight what we have is a consensus to recommend that you, that the current, what we call version 3.3 is posted to the district website. The goal is to open that to the public tomorrow and solicit public community feedback, and then the plan is to receive the feedback through the November 5th, and then the committee will meet again on November 12th and consider all the feedback that's presented. Our goal is to return to the board on November 29th to make a recommendation based on an updated matrix.
And then as far as communication plan, we're going to have Cory and Ryan discuss that, just so y'all are familiar with that.
So we've been working with Mr. Disler and Matt Smith on communication regarding this Based on the pleasure of the board tonight, our plan would be to, ideally, to open up the public comment period tomorrow and to announce that as part of our board brief's newsletter that goes to all families. We would have that period open through November 5th. We would have a series of periodic communications directly pushed out through social media. There are a total of four direct emails that would reach everyone in our community through that open period, either through our two newsletters and direct emails just about hazardous routes feedback. We are also planning to work with Jimmy to create a video that would also go out on social media that would encourage people to go and provide feedback. So there is a full-out bullets to collect information in this window for public feedback.
Jimmy, the changes that you made to the tool, you made some changes to it. Have you looked at what we have now and how much it will affect us?
Yes. We, one of the things the committee did ask us is to pull some of the current existing walking routes as well as hazardous routes, just to see the impact. It's hit and miss. They're pretty much saying the same. We did have a couple that actually is existing walkers that would be provided bus, they would actually move in the bus, but then in the hazardous side, you had a couple that went to walking status. Because the way the previous instrument, when you looked at it, some of these were duplicated, and that's what some of the scorers would do. You'd have duplicate categories or duplicate, duplicated items selected, and it would increase the points. Where the current instrument that they're proposing, you know, if you look, I'll tell you, we can talk about, we do have a hard copy in your folder of what's there. The first two sheets, of course, are all your definitions, the code, just to be very clear on the background of hazardous routes and the transportation. Then when you get into the instrument, one thing the committee.
Can we just back off for a second? Because I want to make sure the board understands, this is a major change. This delineates for our public what the law is and what specifies students who are eligible or not eligible for transportation. We do bus a tremendous number of children that are inside two miles, and this is, so the community clearly understands what is our policy that you all have adopted, what is the law, what do we do in terms of our processes? So I think it's a, it's a great addition to try to focus people to understand what is the big picture here, and I didn't want to gloss over because I think that's a big piece of what you all did.
I would agree. As one of the committee members looking at this, roughly 21,000 students live within the two-mile radius. Of those, approximately 4,000 are bused, and to be honest, there was some ambiguity in the existing matrix as it existed to Mr. Disler's point. There's multiple instances of duplication, i.e., you'd get multiple points in different categories for the same single hazard. And then there was one other difference, which it gave points for the distance you walked, and nowhere in any of the other instruments that we looked at, including the definitions provided by the state, was the distance itself a hazard. So if you're, so we recommended that that be removed. We recommended a high degree of clarity put in, single counting of individual hazards, and then we also recommended that the ambiguity be removed so that it's either you're hazardous or you're not, and there's no gray area in between. And just as a comparison, some of the districts that we compared to have a single sentence, and they describe in one sentence what a hazardous route is. And the other side of that is it gives discretion to the local principal at the local campus level to decide. I think both of those are dangerous. So we worked very hard to have a very clear, concise system that would be defendable, that would be equitable, and would be repeatable.
Now, were those parents that had the problem, review them in the committee?
The groups.
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question because I'm not sure it got picked up by audio?
I said, were the parents that were involved in the busing thing before they came to the coffee and all, were they involved in this process?
Now, the committees were comprised, or the members were comprised from DEWIC. They took volunteers out of the DEWIC committee, and those were the ones, and we took everybody that volunteered.
All right. I do think this addresses a lot of those concerns though, because it's so clear and easy to understand and so concise on the scoring. There's really not any ambiguity that I can see.
And those parents will now have the opportunity, if you approve, when we put this online tomorrow, to provide input as well. Matter of fact, the entire community will have that opportunity.
Let me take a hypothetical though. Let's say the parents go, no, 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 I think distance walk is a hazard, and I'm not sure, but they come up with something, reason, and let's say there's consistency across the board of why they think that should be there, then what's your rubric or what's your status on how are these comments coming in and how are you going to consider them, put them in here, and how do we know that happened or what happened?
So what I would recommend that we do, depending on the amount of comments that we receive, it is open to the public to be able to comment starting tomorrow pending decision here, approval here. Basically, in the past where we've done this is we would then go through and rank order those comments and look at how often that may be repeated or the concern that was done. We would then discuss as a community team to decide what we are doing, and to be clear, this is community-driven. We have the support and assistance of Mr. Disler's staff as well as chief of staff in the office of the district in the room with us, but really are encouraging us to drive it. We will then go through, adjust, modify matrix if needed as per recommendations, and then our goal is to return it to you. Ultimately, you would have the final decision on how that matrix looks.
So we'll just see that chart, and it'll be like, here's where they ranked, here's how we did it, here were the comments.
Yes.
So, two-part question. Is this unique to LISD or did you take somebody else's hazardous route?
Ironically, the, a lot of the other districts took ours. So we, when we looked at, we had a fairly robust package before, and some of the districts copied it word for word. Other districts use it as a theme. What we're recommending with removing the double counting and increasing the clarity and providing specific definitions so that people understand what arterial streets mean, what the different hazardous routes mean, I think that will improve the overall product for this type of decision, and I would suggest that other districts may come back to look at what we've done. It's an opportunity to continue to lead.
So the follow-up to that is, now that you've looked at it and we've made these adjustments, and I really appreciate not double counting some things, I think that was very important, where's the con? What do we need to look out for? What doesn't work in this?
I think the big one is what he's mentioned is the distance. There's a lot of discussion about distance being considered. The discussion ended up that we, that I heard several times was, the distance is not so much the hazard, it's what you walk along and cross. Those are the hazards. The distance is more, you know, time.
But as a kindergarten parent that says, my child is five years old, she can't walk two miles. I'm just saying, is that the biggest con of this one, that we're not considering distance?
Well, but there is a weight for elementary versus middle versus high school you may want to talk about.
Agreed, yes.
I think consideration.
In response to the first comment, and one of the things that the committee struggled with, was giving all things that equal, someone that lived 1.99 miles away versus 2.00 miles away means walking versus riding in a bus, and so we really tried to remove the distance component out of it. We do however have a weighting system, so that is the children are younger, elementary, the middle school, and then to high school. The younger children have an overall aggregate weight rating to the total point system, recognizing that they're younger and that they may have some additional supervision needs.
Then I, when we open that up to the community to comment, that's probably something we need to say because everyone's going to bring up distance, and so how we dealt with it is with the weight. I just think that may help in some of the comments.
Yeah, I agree that having, here's what's different, and here's why we've moved away from, and I think it's a really good point that you talked about. Of all the districts that you surveyed on how they do it, some have a single sentence. As someone who was pretty vocal about concerns over the way we were doing it. As someone who was pretty vocal about concerns over the, the way we were doing it, this is amazing. I am really impressed with this. I think it's very thoughtful, it's well thought out. I do have a couple of things that I'll probably, you know, talk to you about offline that maybe we want to look at. My biggest thing is about the communication when we open this up. Putting it out on the website, putting it out in social media, certainly. Is this something that maybe we could get with, like, one of the local newspapers, Community Impact, or even say, "Hey, can you help us get the word out that this thing is out here?" Because I think it's that important. The, the other thing is-
Well, Maggie-
Well, there you go. The other thing is, a lot of the parents, they did obviously talk about the, the distance, especially for the, the younger students, but they also talked about daylight versus dark. Was that something that was discussed?
We did not discuss daylight versus dark. I think that you address a lot of daylight versus dark within your school operating times, specifically dismissal times for younger students getting out earlier in the day. We did not look at arrival times to the school in the morning.
Okay. Another question- Can I make a, I'm sorry, but I think that's a really good question, because I brought that up with Mr. Disler. We talked about it several times. It didn't get to the committee level, because again, the issue of daylight versus darkness, I was hoping would be really in the idea of elementary being more heavily weighted than high school. It's not that the issue was ignored completely, it's actually already in the matrix from the previous scoring. That's why elementary gets a little bit higher weight. You know, one of the things that's very interesting, and I think it needs to be stated, there are, and we could certainly survey, but there are a number of districts that say, "Two miles and closer, you don't get, you don't get transportation." That's, that's your responsibility as a parent, as a patron. I think our district's done an amazing job, when you think about the fact that over 4,000 kids, oh, nearly 5,000 kids in our district, get transportation within two miles. Sometimes that creates problems in and of itself, because then people get the assumption that I should get transportation too within, within two miles. There are so many variances that I think we're going to see come in that people are going to point out. I think certainly distance will be one, daylight will be another one. But I think people will look at sometimes their own particular circumstances and want to point out those issues. And so, one of the things I like about the committee itself is it's a group of people that are citizen-driven but don't have a vested interest at this time. But I do think it's important for y'all, and I apologize for interrupting, but for y'all to really provide some feedback as well. You don't, you can certainly go on the survey, but you can simply let Mr. Disler know that this is what we feel strongly about, because there's nothing that's complete about this. This is certainly very close to getting towards the end zone, but it's not there yet, because we haven't gotten the larger community input yet, or, or the board's input. Another thing that come up is, previously when we were doing the, the route, we would say, going back to distance, and I know that that doesn't pertain to this new one, but hear me out. We would, we would assume a particular walking route and say, "Here are all the hazards based on this way of walking from your house to, to the school." Would it be worth considering having what we say is, "Here's the route that we looked at, here, here's the map that we used, here's, here's where we looked at it," so that parents know that-
We, we did, sir, go ahead, go ahead. We did address the ambiguity around the walk, and we spent significant time talking in the preamble, describing how the walk should be defined as the closest route from the front home door or property entrance of the residential unit to a landmark at the school, walking on public right-of-way.
Okay.
And it is looked at both distances, keeping in mind that you may have one-way directions or other things that are only accessible in one direction, and that the longer of the two would be considered. And while distance, we just said isn't considered, if you broke the two-mile barrier, then that busing would then come into effect. If I could, and take a moment, speaking as a citizen, not as part of the committee, because we didn't address time, I would suggest one thing that I would caution, ultimately it is up to the pleasure of this, of the board to decide if time should be included. One of the things that we heard from the transportation staffing group, which is a very robust team, compliment you on, on, on what goes on, the logistics behind busing, daylight's dynamic. And so the question then becomes, at what point are you going to assess? And if you are going to consider daylight, are you prepared then to consider mid-year busing changes? And I would agree, I would strongly encourage you with 39,900 students moving to 52,000, that you may want to only adjust busing schedules once per year.
Right.
And then if you're going to measure in the summer, daylight is no longer an issue. So I would just, I would encourage you to think strong about that before you put a dynamic environment into it.
Right, and I fully appreciate that. To me, I think the daylight versus dark is along the same vein as the distance walk. It's not the fact that it's dark, it's what hazards will you encounter, whether it's a distance or if it's light or darker.
Right.
So I get that. I do think, however, there's probably a little bit more consideration if it's dark, but then to your point, it's, it's, it's a moving target throughout the year. So I'm glad you all are sorting that out, and I just get to ask questions. But, so in, on page five, student rider eligibility, so under A, LISD district measure, measuring methods, that's where we're talking about those, how, how we got there.
Yes.
Because that's always one of the things we get a lot of, they'll call in and say, "I checked in on Google Maps and I'm 2.1 miles or two miles, yet it wasn't clear or spelled out." So we wanted to make sure, the committee said, "Let's make sure and spell it out." And so we said exactly at the school, it's at the flagpoles, at the front door, there it is.
Right.
At the drive, not at the flagpole, the drive nearest those elements, and then at the home, just like you said, property line, the front door, or department, the front office. That way, anybody can pick it and know where we're measuring to. Because that's, the committee, you know, when they looked at, they said, "There's a lot of confusion, it's not clear, ambiguity." And so they really wanted to spell out all the steps and be very clear what was considered in rating or checking also. So they've done a great job with this.
Yeah. Again, as somebody who was concerned about this, I, I think this is just really, really well-done. I'm, I'm really impressed with this.
So I have a couple of questions myself. First, for those items that are described, including the instruction, mark all that apply, right? There are several of those. Help me understand how that works. And I'll use the one near the bottom of the front page as an example. Description of streets to be traveled along. So if I walk 1.7 miles along a single street that is 45 miles an hour, what does that mean? Versus, I walk the same distance, but I make a left turn halfway and I walk two streets at 45 miles an hour. Do we count that differently?
If the type of street, if it's a local collector or arterial, what they're looking for are the different type of streets, because different types of streets, by definition, have different speeds, different traffic-
Yep.
... or car volume. And so they would count the different type of streets you, you're walking along.
Well, I'll come to that in a second. Let me, let me first start with straight line, one street of one type. You tell me whatever type it is, it's that street, one type, okay? Second is, we got two streets of the same type. Does that count twice as many points?
No. Because it's the same street.
Okay, so it's only number of types.
Yeah.
So if I have one type, that's 50 points, and I have another, another type that's a local street without walkways, I get another 20 points.
Exactly. The only time you put in quantity is when you're doing the commercial industrial crossings. They want to know, if you're going by 15 of them, you're going to get 25 points per crossing.
Basically, as a committee, we tried to quantify every time there's a potential for pedestrians transacting against vehicles.
Yeah, I guess where I'm going is, while that may be a unique hazard, it may be less hazardous than doing the same thing for a longer period of time. Does that make sense? But the way that this is accumulating, it may create a higher score when you've actually reduced the risk. Does that make sense?
So what you're saying, Aaron, is which, which one of these four would be the one that you would-
Let me give you an example, right? If I walk across, or, sorry, I walk along one arterial street without walkways, that's, that counts 50 points.
Yes.
Okay? If I travel the same distance, okay, but halfway there, in the total distance, I switch and I go to a local street without walkways, I'm going to get an extra 20 points, even though our rubric says that's less dangerous by 30 points. Then if I continued, does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. So to, to allow to attempt to clarify the intent of, of that specific section, to follow your example, again, we are using the closest distance between the two points on public road right-of-ways. So there is no other choice for that child to be able to walk. And the reason we specifically laid out local streets without sidewalks was not the fact that it had a local street, which is typically the lowest volume of traffic, but it had no sidewalk. And so we did see an inherent potential for hazardous by walking on the street without, without the sidewalk. We had a lot of conversation around this, President Johnson, and you will see at the top, we came up with what we call these absolute, how you say, non-starters.
Yep.
And, and so if you had to walk along the street greater than a certain speed, automatic hazard. If you had to cross a street that had greater than a certain speed, automatic hazard. This is where we ran into trouble under the old matrix, where there was multiple triple, quadruple counting of the same streets.
Well, here's my fear. I think we may have that again, in a sense. In other words, if I have to make eight turns, right? Left turn, right turn, left turn, right turn, and I have the zigzag path to get to the campus, I'm going to score a lot of points.
Aaron, does this also work a little easier to explain if we look at the speed limits? Because I was thinking the same thing. Mark all that apply. If you start in a neighborhood that's at 15-
That's right.
... and then you go up to 26, and then you go into a 36, does that mean if I mark all that apply, you're going to end up with 75 points?
That's my point.
And, and so what I would point out-
So mark all that apply.
Yeah, mark all that apply, but it's not a multiple quantity. So if you are on type A street and you turn the corner in your example and it still continues to be that same type street, that's not a double count. You're continuing to walk along that street, whether it's curved or bent.
But if it gets slower, you're going to get more points when actually the hazard has been reduced.
So typically, and residential homes on local streets, I understand what you're saying, but so residential homes sit on the local streets, then feeding to the collector streets, and then feeding into the, into the arterial streets. So while you're thinking, "I've turned the corner from the dangerous street to the safe street, I'm getting more points." In reality, they would have started on the safer street and then moved to the dangerous street. I would also point out that the threshold to be considered, a hazardous walk, or hazardous route, I believe the point count is now at 476 points. So while we're talking about all of the nuances in your example, you may be only at 20% of the total. You have to look at the whole picture.
Sure, sure.
I, I think where you're going with that is, which one of these, if you touch, how high up do you touch?
If it's mark all that apply and you have a wide variety of streets, you're going to score a lot of points. As opposed to having a more hazardous route that's more consistent, if that makes sense, right? So I'll leave that for now. It's a concern that I have. A second item, one of the things that we talked about in the lead-up to this committee was the importance of consistency. And the fact that, you know, if, if Jimmy goes out and scores a particular route, and then Sean goes out and scores that route independently, and then I go out and score that route independently, and we compare our three scores, they should be tightly clustered, right?
Yes.
There may be some variation, but this instrument should allow us to get a very consistent result. I, I don't have an opinion yet about whether that, this instrument does that. The question is, have we tested this instrument yet in those environments and what's the failure in terms of that consistency?
Yes. The transportation, the value, people that do the evaluation of the two, they did it and I think they're within 15 points, and a lot of it is, when they went through and counted the crossings, the type of crossing, they look at that. And so if you're doing a residential, you don't get the, the points. It's only when you do commercial or industrial. And so those, that's where you get the variance. And then, because before, some of these, the previous ones, we had the confusion was, was the higher point inclusive of the points below or not? Or do we mark them? For this instrument, you only select the ones that apply to your situation. And so it's very clearly marked, you can take these and you can compare very quickly the differences. That's one thing the committee's been working hard on, is trying to make it very consistent. Until we do probably a larger sample-
Sure.
-and we only get eight, so it's, it's hard to-
That's good. So early returns suggest it's pretty consistent.
Yep.
We'll see as we roll along.
Yep.
So final point is, I think with the communication to the community, it might be helpful to have a couple sample routes and sample scores that suggest for this particular route, here is how we think it would be scored, so that it gives people a sense for how to use the rubric. Does that make sense?
Yes. I, I would just caution us, because I'm afraid people are going to start applying it to their particular route and making suggestions based on how it impacts them.
I think they are anyway.
Right. But the point is, if you are giving them a specific route, you're already predetermining which route. You'd almost have to make them a hypothetical route, or would that's something we can look at? If you give it your-
Yeah, that's, however you want to do it.
Yeah.
I think, I think folks who are interested in this topic are going to do just what you described, whether you give them guidance or not.
Right.
My point is, if we give them a schedule that says, "Here's how we're scoring routes like this," it at least gives us a place to align or a place to focus the conversation.
My thought, when we started this from the beginning, was trying to get input from the community for clarity purposes on how we are going to be scoring this matrix. I think, I mean, we'll do what the board wishes. This, this is a pretty clearly delineated and scoring matrix. Now, whether the points are right, you know, that's something they could, certainly the community can have input into, whether they don't understand some part of it, or they think that there should be some additional scoring that's not on here, certainly that is important for us to look at. But what happened to us already is when we went out with hypotheticals, people came back and said, "Well, under this scenario," we did this last spring, "I got a route, and under this one, I didn't, so I like this route," or vice versa.
That's my concern, that it might cause more confusion.
I don't, I guess I'm not worried about the confusion because we haven't adopted anything, right? We're in consideration cycle. Here, here's the concern I-
Right, but it's going to be the, I saw it on the computer, and that route was done.
I bought my house because of it.
Yeah, I bought my house based on that.
I mean, we're in a, we're in a community feedback cycle. I'm not sure how I see people making buying decisions based on that.
Well, I'm, I'm just saying, the form as it is, I think will get the best feedback.
I'm pretty sure they're going to take the form and schedule and do their own route while they tell us, so we don't need to-
Right.
They are.
What if we looked at, we're probably, and see how we can score the matrix?
We, we were trying not to predetermine, we were trying not to predetermine an outcome. I think that was one of the really critical factors in asking the committee members to come together. It's also part of the reason why we went to DEWIC and asked for volunteers who were independent thinkers in terms of, most of the people weren't going to be impacted by the system that was established. The good news about what's happened is there's still a lot of opportunity for adjustment. What I hope is there's not a lot of adjustment that has to be made. Doesn't mean there can't be some that occurs. I will tell you that, in my experience of doing this now, and some of you have done it almost as long as I have, you know, 20 to 25 years of doing hazardous routes, no matter what system we put out, there's going to be people that are not happy with the outcome.
Exactly right.
What we want, though, is a system that is defensible, that is clear enough and defined well enough that people know how we're scoring it. And, and I just, I get concerned if we predetermine by putting routes out that this route is going to qualify, this route is not going to qualify, or here's how we're determining the points without getting the feedback otherwise, it will skew the results that people will base it upon how it impacts them. But again, if that's the collective will of the board, we'll be happy to do that.
Well, and I, I think there is this, this trying to figure it out, because I agree, trying to put numbers on there, giving you a soundful route, could cloud or cause people to fixate on something when you really just want them to concentrate on, on this instrument? What do you think about this instrument? I, I can see that, that we might lose focus, and you want- I can see that we might lose focus, and you wanna focus everybody on this instrument. But when I look at the instrument right now, I mean, my question was, mark all that apply, so then my kiddos are gonna get all points here, we're all good. I might not then respond thinking, this looks like what I was thinking. And then when the district actually rolls it out, if it's something different, then I'm gonna lose my trust. And I don't wanna lose trust in the community. So that's where I agree, that it does help to understand kind of, are we on the same page, right? And I don't know how to help make sure we're, how can you tell somebody, okay, here's how we want you to interpret what we're writing? I mean, people are gonna interpret this on their own.
Well, I think we covered that, though, when we were talking about this earlier, that once we developed something that, as Dr. Troxel says, is defensible and is much more clear, and I think the definitions certainly go a long way to removing ambiguity. Yeah, there's a couple of tweaks here with, you get points for multiple, we can work through that. But the final product, I thought in earlier discussions, we talked about as we rolled this out, this instrument states that, beginning next year, you will not have hazardous route because you fall below what the number is that would determine that you require a bus. I thought there was a mechanism in place then that the parents could have feedback with us to say, well, did you consider this? Or, you know, is there a reason why? What do you bring?
If you look at the last slide, it's a timeline that we basically, back in September when we brought the committee to you, we added the two boxed items that are in the red boxes. You know, if you look in January, when we notified the parents of the proposed changes, they now get two months or two weeks of input back for us to reevaluate or consider something. So they get notified here in early November, they'll get told we're gonna begin the process, we'll evaluate in December, then in January, they'll be notified of any proposed changes. And then board makes the approval, and we notify them, here's the outcome.
Right. So there is that feedback, so I think that addresses it.
Just to help that trust, right? You just don't want it to fail. And to go back to the consistency question that you talked about, I know y'all had people in transportation walk the route and look at the measurement. But some of the consistency was, parents felt that they were getting something different from transportation. Did you have some of your committee parents try it as well to make sure there was a consistency there?
And a lot of it was because the instrument. It had things, you got points for street with no sidewalk, street with sidewalks. And one thing this committee's talked about is, we're not gonna score things that aren't hazardous. If it's, if you have sidewalks, if a street's safe, don't give them points for having a sidewalk when the hazard's not a sidewalk. And so they took a lot of that out.
Sure.
It's a lot clearer.
I think we oughta let this go to the community, because whatever we've said, they're gonna say it. And then we'll deal with it at the end to see what is really their issues. And if they think it's fair, I think if they think it's fair, then we're just talking about tweaks. If they don't think it's fair, I think we're gonna hear about it. So at this point, I really think it needs to go to the community, because we're not gonna make any changes tonight on it.
I would agree with that, and that was the citizen committee's recommendation to staff with that, is that it's time to release it to the public, to have that comment. To answer your question, President Johnson, we do believe that the timeline as proposed by Mr. Disler does allow people to take the specific route their child may walk and have a chance to look at it. We were very cautious. I used some of the same language as when we sorted through the $1.2 billion worth of requests for the bond. And it says, very important that we don't benchmark the child, we must benchmark the district, we must benchmark the improvements. Along the same line, it was, we did not wanna benchmark a route, we wanted to talk about benchmarking hazards. And to the credit of the administration staff, they did not disclose with any details that there is any specific problems or anything specific. They worked very hard to make sure that we were not trying to predetermine a solution, but rather laid it out on an open table for us to figure out what is the best and where's the opportunities and the weaknesses of our peer groups as well as our own system. And then how can we come up with a better system to serve the residents and the taxpayers of the district?
Yeah, I think, like I said, I think this is far and away just such an improvement over what we had last year. And I think with the right presentation through our social media and hopefully other sources, that here's what it is, here's how we're gonna do this program, start to finish, and then implore them, please provide us your feedback. But let's not also lose sight of the fact that, like Dr. Troxel said earlier, this is something not a lot of districts are doing, and there's not really a legal requirement to do this. So I think this is a tremendous amount of work to take care of the kiddos that are going through a hazard. I do have one more question, and I promise I'll be quiet. I live close to 1431, that's well within two miles of our campuses. And 1431 right now is going through just enormous changes. Is there a mechanism to capture routes that aren't hazardous, that may at some point become hazardous? How do we identify those?
Where would you?
I mean, a combination of things. One, the drivers always let us know, they have so many eyes. We have a lot of eyes out there. But second, when we start notifying the parents in the November timeframe, we're asking, are the conditions changed along your route? Let us know.
Okay, so the notification families less than two miles, that's going to everyone within the two-mile circle?
Right.
Okay. So that would capture that then?
In early November, we'll be sending out 21,000 letters to the district that are within the two miles. They will be getting letters.
And perhaps I'm missing on this timeline. It says, December, begin evaluations. Is that with the new instrument? And if that is, does that mean you're bringing back comments from the community at the second meeting in November?
The 29th.
29th.
And let's talk about that for a moment, because I think Tricia's saying she wants the exact comments from the community. What I thought we were doing is your committee was taking those comments, digesting it, and then bringing back any changes based on the community input.
I mean, we can-
That was our intent as part of my presentation.
And we can provide what feedback we did get if you wanna see it.
Well, I thought we would get some type of weighted score or something, what comments overall you got back.
I mean, they'll have the scores, and what we've done, they've gone through and gotten the strengths and weaknesses. And then what we're gonna do after the community feedback is, we're gonna provide them with feedback. And we're gonna, Cory's team will be combining or compiling that information for us, and we're gonna provide it to them, and then they can sit there and decide, depending on what it is. It's, a lot depends on how much we get, and if it's consistently one or two items, that's gonna be simple.
Yeah, and I don't wanna armchair quarterback this, but I think what you're saying is, you would like to- So here was the feedback, based on the feedback, here is the changes or no changes, but at least we see what they were looking at, so that-
Kind of something to give you just, and I'm sorry, maybe I misunderstood. Did you not say that you were going to be waiting, like looking at all the responses and giving us some sheet?
So not waiting in the terms of providing greater scoring potential, but rather go through, hypothetically speaking, we have 1,000 comments come back, and there are 1,000 different comments. Then we would probably have a different recommendation to adjust this than if we had 998 comments all saying, you should do this, right? And two people said, do that.
And we'll probably have some sheet that says something like, we had a bunch of comments that went to this.
Right, and then sort them into this type of comment, that type of comment, you know? And then either we provided credibility to them and we made the following adjustments, or we did not make an adjustment, but this is why.
Tricia, if you have, the reason why I got concerned about weights, I just wanna explain. You could have 200 comments that could all be incorrect, right? Just, there are a lot of people saying it, but doesn't mean that it's actually a more hazardous situation. You could have one comment that really hits the point on something that we have not calculated into the equation that's really significant. So to put a scoring mechanism into the comments, I think would be difficult to do. I think the committee has to weigh the value of those comments based on their previous work. I do believe, and I wanna make sure the committee understood, that the board would like to see those comments, so you have an opportunity to review the comments and be able to discuss those. Also taking into consideration the comments that you heard today from the board members, including the point that Erin made earlier about additional or additive points by the windiness of the route you're actually transversing. The other thing that I would like you to talk about is whether, at some point, it would be good to add. And I really think the committee needs to provide additional feedback, hypothetical routes or routes that are exactly existing right now. I think that's the committee work that needs to be done, based on what you've heard from both Mr. Johnson but also committee members. Ultimately, I don't wanna take a committee, and we did the same thing with the bond, I don't wanna take a committee and have the committee so narrowed in on their focus that you don't feel like you have the flexibility as community members to really provide input that you need. But I do think it's important for the board to see the comments and have some type of rank order that we had 300 comments that said this, and 50 comments that said this, and 12 that said this, in general categories.
Absolutely, and that's the goal. And at the end of the day, the committee will make a recommendation to a matrix. And I would believe that it'd be the pleasure of this board to decide to adopt it, modify it, or reject it and continue with what you have. Remember, you already have a matrix in place, and it's a robust matrix, because other districts, let's be honest, they've just blatantly copied yours. So I'd like to think that we've done good work in the district and others have followed. This is an opportunity to provide clarification, repeatability, and defendability to what is arguably an ambiguous matrix. It's a chance to make it better. You can choose to look at what we've said as a citizen committee, or make adjustments on your own, or leave it as it is.
I just have, I'm sorry, but I thought about not saying it, but I do wanna say, there's several areas in the district that the kids could walk on the road, but there's actually parks and trails that you can go on to get to the school and stay completely off the road. Are we allowing for that?
We talked about that, and we decided to have clarity in the distance measuring. It needs to be on public street system. And so, you know, I, my kid is too scared to walk through the park. But, you know, Mr. Disler's kid thinks that's great. So should he be penalized because now it's suddenly shorter? So we really felt parks, and where I live in my part of the district, lots of trails, lots of cutbacks, lots of all sorts of things like that. We really felt it was strong, that it should be public road right-of-way, shortest distance, home to school. And you can show it on your proprietary software, you could show exactly how it's measured. It's measured consistently for every case that you study, not Google Earth, not this, not that, and not in a trail system.
I'm gonna thank 1431, just wanted to ask that question.
Again, really impressive work. I'm really impressed with this.
Thank you.
Sean, again, I wanna thank you and all the community members, 'cause I know you spent a lot of hours working on this. I also wanna thank you for staying through this portion of the board meeting when you have to drive quite a distance home. Several of our board members will be following you shortly after words. But we do appreciate your work. And Jimmy, thank you, and Ann, I see you back there. Thank you for the work you've done as well on this. It's very valuable. I'm sure we'll have additional tweaks based on community input, but thank you so much.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you both. All right, we will continue with item H, discussion, possible approval of GMP number two for Cedar Park High School and some other GMPs.
Yes. GMP two, we did present it last meeting, and this is to get the construction, carry construction on. We actually have our permits now for Cedar Park High School, and within the next week, they should be under construction. The weather has been delayed getting the trailer out there, and so getting everybody set up. But they are about to kick that off, and so-
Mr. President, I move that the board approves GMP number two in the amount of $15,71,178 for Cedar Park High School additions and renovations, athletic additions and renovations, security updates, and softball complex safety improvements.
I have a motion by Don, a second by Grace. Any additional discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Seven in favor, none opposed.
Next item is GMP number two for Elementary 27. This is the final GMP we're anticipating, and this will, it's under construction, and we're looking for approval tonight.
I move the board approve GMP number two in the amount of $19,244,000 for Elementary 27.
I'll second.
Motion by Pam, second by Jim. All in favor? Any opposed? Seven in favor, none opposed.
Next item is GMP number two for Glenn High School Ag Center. This was entered, and we will be getting permit. Our pre-construction will be next week, so this will be very timely.
Mr. President, I move that the board approve GMP number two in the amount of $1,499,400 for the Glenn High School Agriculture Center.
I'll second.
Motion by Jim, second by Don. All in favor? Any opposed? Seven in favor, none opposed.
Next one is GMP number one for the North Transportation Center. Actually, I'm sorry, GMP number two. And this will, again, be started next week, and this, asking for approval tonight.
Mr. President, I move that the board approve GMP number two in the amount of $10,460,400 for the North Transportation Center.
I'll second.
Motion by Don, second by Grace. All in favor? I didn't ask for discussion. Any opposed? Is there any discussion?
Well, I just think if viewers are watching at home, to make sure that we just clarify, these are items and expenses we've already reviewed before. These are just the next stage in the process. 'Cause if there's somebody who's watching, it just, it sounds like there's not a lot of detail being discussed on this, and it's a lot of dollars.
It is?
Feel free to watch earlier videos. We can point you to those. And we do have still on our bond update, it's on our webpage, so people can go see how we've been following the progress and tracking these.
These are being approved, we'll update our sheets.
That's right.
Thank you, Tricia. That is a good point.
Seven in favor, none opposed, and some discussion.
One more.
Yeah. We do have GMP number three for Leander Middle School HVAC update report. And so this will be carrying us through the remainder of the project. And so this is not up for action tonight, but at the next meeting.
Consent? Will it be on consent at the next meeting, or do you need it?
Just the next meeting.
Is it GMP 30 or 32?
We can place it on consent, and of course, we can pull it off consent if someone prefers that we not adopt it by consent. Okay. General construction update?
Yes, as I mentioned, we're getting ready to kickoff transportation in Ag Center across from Glenn High School. We had our final meeting with the city today. We'll be doing the pre-construction meeting next Wednesday, and then they'll be off and running. Then Cedar Park High School, also next week. And then the elementarys, it finally quit raining a little, and so they'll be picking up speed and moving forward. And again, we'll be coordinating a site visit in the very near future.
Was Locksburg been hurt by the rain?
We've had rain days, no doubt, and so, but everybody anticipates rain during the fall and December time. You always get them, so it's just part of the cycle of construction.
The school will be open on time.
Exactly.
I agree.
You say that now, but you don't know how much more rain will have.
We will open that school on time, we have the streets in there coming.
They think we're concrete, they're right. They're right we've been going. Either we're gonna have a lot more rain or we'll have no rain.
Yeah, feast or famine.
Right. Okay.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Jimmy. At this time, the board will return to closed session for purposes permitted by Texas Government Code, including Texas Government Code 551.071, consultation with attorney regarding pending or contemplated litigation and/or attorney-client privileged matter. 551.074, deliberation regarding resignations, terminations, employment, reassignments, duties, and evaluation of personnel and public officers. 551.074, deliberation regarding contract employee resignations and possible report to ESPEC for abandonment of contract. 551.074, personnel deliberation and consideration of principal position for Elementary 27. 551.074 and 551.076, bus transportation, safety, security measures, and personnel. 551.0821, deliberation regarding matters whereby personally identifiable information regarding one or more students will be disclosed. 551.082 and 551.074, hear and deliberate parent complaint concerning schoolchildren and school district employees. We will not take any action in closed session. We will return to open session following closed session.
It is 10:51 and we are back in open session. Mr. McKay-
Who's got the motion?
-has a motion, or two.
Or six.
Or six.
I do. Mr. President, I move that the Board of Trustees accepts the recommendation for teacher employment contract for personnel additions as presented in accordance with salary scale policies and contract of Leander Independent School District for the 2018-19 school year.
Second.
I have a motion by Jim and a second by Grace. Any discussion? All in favor? Seven in favor, none opposed.
Mr. President, I move the Board of Trustees accept the recommendations for administrator employment contract for personnel additions as presented in accordance with salary scale policies and contract of Leander Independent School District for the 2018-19 school year.
Second.
I have a motion by Jim and a second by Trish. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Seven in favor, none opposed.
Mr. President, I move the Board of Trustees find that under the Texas Education Code, good cause did not exist for Joan Youngdoll to resign her contract employment with the district and therefore decline to accept her resignation.
Second.
Motion by Jim, second by Will. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Seven in favor, none opposed.
Mr. President, I move that the Board of Trustees authorize the superintendent to report Joan Youngdoll to SBEC for abandonment of her teaching contract with the district.
I'll second.
Motion by Jim, second by Dawn. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Seven in favor, none opposed.
Mm-mm. Mm-mm. Hand it to Donnie.
Mr. President, I move the Board of Trustees find that under the Texas Education Code, good cause did not exist for Guven Yilmez to resign his contract employment with the district and therefore decline to accept his resignation.
I'll second.
Motion by Jim, second by Dawn. Any discussion?
A bit of discussion. G-U-V-E-N-Y-I-L-M-A-Z, so just in case I pronounce it incorrectly.
Clarification, okay. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Seven in favor, none opposed.
Mr. President, I move that the Board of Trustees authorize the superintendent to report Guven Yilmez to SBEC for abandonment of his teaching contract with the district.
I'll second.
Motion by Jim, second by Dawn. Any discussion?
Yes, sir. G-U-V-E-N-Y-I-L-M-A-Z, in case I mispronounce the name.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Seven in favor, none opposed.
No more?
We are adjourned.